Have them hurry and get off so we could get on, so apologize for the delay.
Are we all here now?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yes, we are all here.
All right, you want to start it, Irene?
In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the board of Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would be taking place on Monday, October 4th via Zoom webinar at 7:00 PM.
Okay. I want to spend a little time on the agenda. First of all, I want to thank once again Joy Siegel for jumping in and doing all the editing on the resolutions that we're going to be dealing with tonight. Joy, thank you again. Okay, now, we've had a little confusion on the agenda, so let me go through it.
I have to take the attendance.
Craig Plender?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joy Siegel?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Amy Lawrence?
Here.
Shadrew Harjani?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here. Okay, now I want to spend a couple of minutes on the agenda. Uh, it was a little confusing. We haven't had an agenda like this in the recent past. So, we have, I'll call out the names, the calendar numbers, and then we'll indicate that these are the matters that are going to be carried to a, uh, another date on 10, the special meeting on October 27. First is calendar 3806-21. The applicant is Howard Oxenhorn. The second one is calendar 3812-21. That's going to be carried also to the special meeting on 10/21. The applicant is-
Wait, 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 it's 10/27, October 27.
I'm sorry, October 27, 2021. Good. That's AHS Hospital Corp., the applicant on that case. The third one is calendar 3820-21, which will be carried to October 27, 2021, special meeting. The applicants there are Erica and Peter Kay. And the last one that's going to be carried till October 27, 2021 is Sidra and Grant Miller. They're the applicants on 60 Stewart Road. Those matters are being carried without further notice or further publication. Okay.
And Joe, just to confirm for the members of the public, I'm sorry I'm interrupting, that that carried meeting to, special meeting to October 27, 2021 will be a virtual meeting and that members of the public can log in to that meeting at 7 o'clock, uh, using the link that will be on the agenda for that meeting date, correct?
Correct. Okay, now, we're going to go back to memorializations, but I have something that I just want to say very briefly. And that is that it has been pointed out that some of us are reluctant to speak our minds with regard to particular cases that we hear. And I think that's a mistake. I think that where you have, uh, matters that you hear and certain aspects of those cases either hit you as being relevant to the, uh, to the, uh, cranny of the variances or strike you as being, uh, uh, important to the denial of the variances, you should say so. You should say that, um, verbally so that all of us can hear it and make, it'll make Rob Simon's job a little bit easier. Now, I know some of you are saying, "Well, isn't it enough that the applicant has a burden of proof? And if you vote no on a particular matter, then that's another way of saying the applicant has not met its burden of proof." Or if you vote yes on a particular matter, you're saying the applicant has met its burden of proof. That is a true statement. But nonetheless, in drafting, uh, statements, uh, resolutions, I should say, memorializing resolutions, it's a lot easier for the attorney if members of the board have been forthright in stating what has struck them as being negative aspects of a case or positive aspects of a case. Okay, um, now, I think there is one other matter of interest that we should dispose of even before we get to the two memorializations that we're going to be dealing with tonight. And that is the application of the Chi Center. Uh, that is a, that is calendar 3800-21. And it's listed on the agenda as matter number, as the last matter that we're going to hear this evening. Now, I want to say, can, a couple of things about this application. The first is that the, that Rob Simon did not draft the, uh, memorializing resolution in that case. He was not the attorney for the zoning board or the planning board, either one, at the time that that matter came before the board. Now, the, uh, applicant was required by our rules to, uh, next, a copy of the memorializing resolution in that case. They did that. Now, it is a very long memorializing resolution and goes into great detail as to what the testimony was in that case. I urge all of you not to, in any way, shape, or form, be, first of all, if you haven't read that memorializing resolution, I'm suggesting that at least as to the, uh, the bulk of it, that where the memorializing resolution gets into great detail as to what the witnesses said in the case, that you probably don't want to read all of that. But in any event, none of that is important in the decision that we have before us in the new case, which is calendar 3800-21, which is a completely different case involving the Chi Center than the case that was heard. First of all, the case that was heard in 2001, uh, the cases, I should say, because they're plural, that were heard in 2001. And certainly very different from the case that some of you who were on the board, I think, at the time, there was another case that was brought by the Chi Center that I'm not going to go into any detail about, other than to say that it lasted for 17 meetings over a period of 22 months. But it was not related to the, uh, uh, location, that is, the subject matter of the new application. Now, having said all of that, uh, we have a heavy agenda tonight. And, um, it has been pointed out to me by our attorney that it would be very, very, uh, unfortunate if we got to, you know, 10:30 tonight when the applicant was having to pay for their attorney and various expert witnesses to sit through all these other cases only to be told that they could not be reached tonight, at least not in a way that would lead to a conclusion by this board. Because I'm, because from knowing something about the case and reading the application, it is obvious that there are going to be multiple witnesses for the applicant in that case. So, Rob Simon has spoken to the attorney.
Hey, Joe, I apologize for interrupting. Can maybe we have Eileen bring the attorney, Mike Levine, onto the panel just so that he can, uh, respond to your, I guess, comments?
That's great.
Thank you.
Can you bring him in? Mr. Levine?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you very much for letting me join. Yes, my name is Michael Levine. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Chi Center. Uh, I think you've accurately, uh, described, um, the situation facing the applicant. Mr. Simon was, uh, kind enough to reach out to me this afternoon, and we had a conversation, as has been, uh, described. And, uh, in light of that situation, we would like to respectfully request that the board, um, carry our application to the next available, uh, public meeting date. Um, and just ask that, uh, once that date's established, if a sufficient, uh, announcement could be made of that so that there's no need to, uh, renotice for that new date. Otherwise, uh, I think you've succinctly, um, described the situation. I don't think there's need for me to spend any more, uh, time going into it any further at this point.
Thank you. Eileen, is there a date that we can move this case to where they will have a substantial amount of time in order to present their case?
Well.
I know we're, we're, we're under the gun in terms of the number of cases that have been filed.
I have three applications already on November 15th. I have only one on December 6th currently. You know, I mean, the November 1st meeting, one, two, three, four, there's already six on October 18th, one, two, three, there's five on. And honestly, it would be kind of meaningless to put them on either one of those.
So, in the first meeting, where, where we have only one case is when?
December 6th.
December 6th?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
I mean, if, if I know that Chi Center is going to come on the 6th, I wouldn't schedule anymore.
Yes, it'll, it'll take quite a while to hear that case.
Take the full.
I am sure. Mr. Levine, if we need a, uh, a statement from the applicant that they waive any, uh, proceedings that they might have, uh, in terms of the time of decision, uh, we are thinking about December 6th. How does that sound to you?
Um, that sounds, uh, it sounds like it's the first available date with a reasonable likelihood to get a sufficient amount of time, which I, I think we all agree, uh, is needed. I can tell you that, yes, we would waive any, uh, claims with respect to time of decision, um, you know, through that date, and, um, I can guarantee the board that we would, uh, be prepared to, to move forward on that date so that, um, uh, we could devote a substantial amount of time to trying to, uh, to address this application.
Thank you. Eileen, let's make that a December 6th date.
Okay.
And I would ask you kindly to not schedule anything else on that date. This is going to be, this is going to be a long case.
And we will, by that time, have the engineers report as well as the planners report.
Fine.
Ready by that time.
Okay, can I ask us, Mr. Steinberg, if Mr. Levine would be amenable to extending the, the time for decision through the end of December, uh, given, uh, the anticipated, uh, amount of time needed for the case?
Uh, yes, certainly, Mr. Simon. Yes, confirmed through the end of December.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And if you, Mike, if you can just put something in writing when you get a chance?
Yes, we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, Mr. Levine. And we will hold open that December 6th date with just one other matter to be heard that night. And you will have ample opportunity to present your case, I'm sure.
That sounds good, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your consideration as well as that of, uh, of Mr. Simon. I think that'll work out well for all involved, and we do appreciate the board's, uh, consideration in that regard.
Any other board members have any issues with, with what we've just done or are about to do?
No issue. I just, I see, I see a hand raised in the audience.
Eileen, is there someone in the public?
Two hands, one hand, yeah. I s- I see one hand raised. I don't know. Um, I will bring them over, and I don't know if they have a question relative, relative to this.
It's two hands now.
I know, I see two hands. Any question regarding this application?
Yes, uh, I'm a resident of Bardwell Terrace. Uh, I wanted to make sure that this hearing will not happen today at all. It is going to be moved completely to December 6th?
Yes.
Yes, it will not be heard tonight.
It will not be heard tonight. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No one else, Eileen?
Yeah, um, yes, here.
Okay.
Yes, here, MTIs?
Yes, uh, thank you very much, uh, for giving your opportunity. Just wanted to make sure that all of the residents of Bardwell Terrace, this community, and, uh, the community across the street opposite to this proposed site will be given the full opportunity and to hear, uh, hear their concerns. Uh, this is-
We have December 6th, on the December-
They will, they will be given complete opportunity to be heard in the normal course of the hearing of the application.
Sure, thank you, sir. Uh, the second question is, uh, uh, if we want to, we want to present, uh, maybe our attorney, as well as we want to present as a community, we want to present, want to be represented through an attorney. And secondly, we want to present some evidence, some videos and pictures. Uh, how we can do that? Will it, will there be some time in future where you will, we will get that opportunity, or how will that happen?
Let me handle that, Joe. So, if, if, first of all, if you, uh, anyone, uh, member of the public has the, the right and opportunity to retain an attorney with regard to this matter that's being rescheduled to take place on, on December 6th, um, if your attorney, who you may hire, will instruct you as to the proper procedure for how this land use, uh, board proceeding is conducted, uh, and certainly at the appropriate time, once the applicant rests its case, that the public would have an opportunity via an attorney or, uh, by any, uh, member of the public who is standing to participate in the matter to, uh, make comments, present evidence, and the like.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, when you say, uh, the case will be decided by December 31st, do you mean to say that the applicant will be heard, as well as all the residents will be heard, and you will have your final decisions before?
No, sir.
We're not sure when the final decision will be made. It depends on the length of the witnesses and whether more than one night is required for this case. We may or may not conclude the entire matter on December the 6th.
Okay.
We will certainly devote substantial time that night to this matter, but it may not be enough to conclude the entire case. The, excuse me, the public will be given fair opportunity to be heard. Everyone in the public.
Okay, thank you.
As well as the public's witnesses, any statements that the public would like to make, or any expert witnesses the public would like to present that evening, or any adjourned evening.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let me make a formal announcement, then, that the case, which is, um, calendar 3800-21, location 437-39 Milburn Avenue and 7 Bardwell Terrace. The applicant, the Chi Center at 307 Milburn Avenue in Milburn, New Jersey. That matter will be heard on December the 6th. That's December 6, 2021. No further notification to the public or publications are required at this time or at any time. The matter will be heard on December the 6th. And it may or may not be concluded that night, depending on the number of witnesses that are presented both by the applicant and by any members of the public who may or may not wish to be heard that night.
But that, that meeting will commence on December 6th at 7 o'clock PM, and it'll be conducted via the Zoom platform.
Via the Zoom platform. And the, uh, code for getting on that Zoom platform can be found on the township website. Mr. Levine, thank you for your cooperation.
Very good. Thank you, uh, very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, have a nice evening.
And we look forward to hearing the case.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going-
Sorry, Joe, there's an, I don't know if you want to address this. There's another hand raised in the audience. Okay, give me one second. You have a question about this application?
Is this Christine?
This is actually Solomon Lama. Um, would there be a legal notice sent out regarding the application?
No.
No.
There will, there will be no, no additional legal notice with the Zoom.
That's correct.
The same Zoom information.
The Zoom information will be on the municipal website.
It's the same, it's the same information. It doesn't change from the beginning.
Well, I think another legal note should be sent out.
It's, well, Rob, I'll let you take this one.
So,
What is this?
By, by a matter of municipal land use law procedures and statutory authority, an application, once it's properly noticed in the mail by certified mail and publication in local newspaper, it can be carried to future dates by audio voice determination. That's exactly precisely what was done this evening. So, the matter is being carried by voice determination until December 6, 2021, at 7 o'clock PM via the Zoom platform. No further notice is legally necessary. And there are, whether you go on the, the website, you look at the agenda, the Zoom link, uh, will be available.
Thank you for considering the question.
You're welcome.
I have a, I have a comment or question. Um, I don't, December 6th is the last night of Hanukkah. And being that this is the Chi Center, I don't know if that matters. Just wanted to bring it up.
This, this is the calendar that was adopted. Okay, I just went forward.
I, I think, Joy, to your point, which is a good one, that if it's determined between now and December 6th, that they wish to, uh, commence the hearings on a different date, they'll notify us for sure. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, now, back to the agenda. And we have a couple of memorializations tonight. Is that correct, Rob?
Yes, we have two memorializations for this evening.
And you want to present those too?
Eileen, we have, we have the Peter Van Sant, I believe.
Peter Van Sant, calendar 3814-1, 322 Taylor Road South. Eligible to vote on this matter are, um, Jody, Joy, Steve, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe, and Amy.
All right, I'm going to ask if, uh, there is a motion to adopt the memorializing resolution in this case.
Move approval of calendar 3814-21.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wolfgang.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Um, the second one is Howard Lee, calendar 3817-21, 402 Milburn Avenue. Same people are eligible.
Is there a motion on this case?
I move approval of a memorialization, uh, memorializing resolution for calendar number 3817-21.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Thank you, Jody.
Thirty seconds.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. All right, thank you, Rob, for preparing those. And once again, thank you, Joy, for working with Rob to get that in the final form. Okay, so now, we are going to turn to the actual cases that will be heard tonight. And the first of those cases is one that, uh, has been, uh, moved from, uh, at least two other meetings. And it's, is, uh, calendar 3792-21, 19 Randall Drive. The applicant is Scott Dorfman of Springfield. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Yeah, I put over, um, James Furst, who is Mr. Dorfman's attorney. Yeah, I put over James First, who is Mr. Dorfman's attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Steinberg.
If you could refresh my memory, Nikki, Nikki Leloudis, is she?
She should be there somewhere and Mark Marion is the architect.
And is there anyone else that is part of this matter?
Mark Marion, the architect, yes.
I need your recuses. I'm in the 200 foot radius.
Okay, yes, that's right. So Craig is accusing. So Amy, you will be acting as a full member on this.
Understood.
I think that's everybody. Scott, Mr. First, Nikki and Mark. Yes.
Mr. First, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Good evening, members of the board. And Mr. Simon, thank you so much for allowing us to appear this evening. This application has been long on the agenda. I believe it first came on the agenda in March. We were able to see the full width and breadth of the Italian restaurant last month and the sub shop the month before that. So thank you, Mrs. Steinberg, for, for giving us the first crack at the apple this morning or this afternoon. We appreciate that. We have Mr. Dorfman. He's available. I don't intend to have him testify for brevity's sake. There's not much he can really add to the case, but I do have him here. I'd swear him in and allow him to answer questions of the board if the board had those questions. But I don't think it's necessary for me to spend any time with Mr. Dorfman. We have two experts to present to you this evening. We have Nikki Leloudis as our engineer and we have Mark Marion as our architect. I just want to briefly go over what we have here. There's been two iterations of this application. There was an iteration where there was a pool in the rear yard on the left side of the property. That was changed some time ago and the board should have, a few months ago, received a revised packet. That revised packet would note that there would be a pool constructed in the rear right yard of the property where the old driveway would exist. There are some photographs that the board should have of existing conditions. There are some overhead photos. So just want to make sure we're all referencing the same plans. When you're looking at those, those would be a plan set. Sheets, one of three. And I don't see the date on it here, but that's okay. As long as you're looking at the one where the pool is in the right rear of the property. I see this and I look at it and I say, oh, there's six variances that are being requested. But in fact, so the board understands, that's actually a little misrepresented. There is, there are two new variances. Three of the six variances are actually reductions of pre-existing non-conformings. And we've actually reduced from six to five. We have removed anything related to a lot coverage variance. So we're here tonight on the accessory coverage, which is the pool. That's the new one. We're here tonight on the rear yard unoccupied variance. We're actually reducing the variance, non-conformity, reducing the building coverage and reducing the FAR. The FAR being the D variance. I know we'll need five members. I think we have, what do you have, seven here? So I need five out of seven. Is that what we have, Mr. Steinberg?
I think so.
I see eight on the screen, but I, only seven are voting, right?
Correct.
That's correct, Mr. First.
Great, thank you, everyone. So really, the overview of this is that Mr. Dorfman purchased the property. He intended to make some improvements to it. Midstream decided to stop and change the plans, install a pool and basically change the side yard to have the rear facing garage turned to the side and then to install his pool. And that's the gist of it. So that's my overview for the board today. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I call Nikki Leloudis as our professional engineer as our first witness.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
If you would just raise your hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to given tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name, for the record, spelling your name, please.
Nikki Leloudis. That's L O U, L O U D I S. I'm with Bowman Consulting at 54 Horse Hill Road in Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Nikki had previously been qualified as an expert on this particular application. Do you want me to go through her qualifications again or can we recognize her as an expert continuing?
Let's go through them again.
Okay, Nikki, will you please give us the benefit of your expertise? Let's start with your formal education for your profession and take us through your licensures, please.
Certainly. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken, graduated in 1989. I've had a professional engineering license in the state of New Jersey since 1993. And I also happen to hold a New York State professional engineering license as well as of 2010.
And you are actively engaged in the business of being a professional engineer, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And my licenses are current.
And who are you currently employed by?
Bowman Consulting.
And have you previously given testimony? We know you've given testimony before this board. Have you given testimony before any other boards in Essex County or in the state of New Jersey?
In Essex County, no, unfortunately. I've provided testimony in front of numerous boards in Bergen County as well as Maristown, South Brunswick, Raritan Township, Montgomery Township. This is my first for Essex.
And you're familiar with the property located at 19 Randall Drive and prepared to give testimony in your expert capacity on this matter, correct?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Steinberg, I'd move Ms. Leloudis as an expert professional engineer, please.
She is so accepted by this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Steinberg. Nikki, yours, I think she needs, you have a share screen there, Nikki?
I do, and I'd like to probably mark the information that I'm going to be sharing with you first.
Mr. Simon, have you wanted to do that? You want to pick one through whatever?
So where, I think where we last left off, we had marked as A4, three sheets of a Bowman site plan dated June 28th, 2021. Has there been an update to those plans?
There has been. The new date is July 16th, 2021. It's the same set of three plans. Sheet one is the cover sheet, sheet two, site and grading plan, and sheet three are the construction detail sheets.
Okay, why don't we mark that Mr. First is A5? Is that okay?
Sure, no problem, Mr. Steinberg. And those have been provided to the board.
That's correct.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I'm going to share a screen with you. I'm going to first share with you the existing aerial prepared by Bowman and and dated July 16th, 2021.
Is this A1, Nikki?
I believe so, yes.
All right, so this has been previously marked as A1, existing aerial, 19 Randall, July 16th, 2021.
Confirmed, Mr. Simon.
So the application before you this evening, as you're all aware of, is for 19 Randall Drive. It's the rehabilitation of an existing two and a half story, single family residence located just east of Harshorn Drive on Randall Drive. It's a 120 by approximately 215 foot, irregular shaped lot. It's also known as block 3702, Lot 2. And the site is in the R4 residential zoning district.
Nikki, the minimum depth for a lot in this zone would be 150 feet, correct?
That is correct.
And the minimum width would be 100. So we're twice as wide, but we're about 30% short in the rear, correct?
That is correct.
And also, we see along the front, a bit of a curve. And then along the rear, we have what appears to be not a straight line, but what appears to be an angled line creating what you've referred to as an irregular lot.
That is correct.
And is it those conditions on the lot that make it unique such that we're requesting a variance for this property?
That is right. It's the inherent shape of the lot and the minimum or less than minimum depth that are creating these variances.
Thank you.
So where was I? I'm sorry. The existing home, as you can see here, the footprint of the existing home is approximately 4,100 square feet in size. The total gross floor area of the existing home is 7,461 square feet. The home is surrounded by similar sized homes in the area. As you can see from the visual here, the three homes across the street. Actually, it is cut off here in the second home, but the three homes here have swimming pools in the back as well as other pools in the area. There is an existing walkway, concrete walkway coming up from Randall Drive to the front of the house. There is an existing driveway to the right, which leads to a rear entry garage. It's a three car garage. So all of this area, which is a little hard to see, but this is all currently paved. There is an existing stone patio path or sidewalk that leads to a large stone patio. And this piece of the building that juts out is a sunroom. The house is undergoing currently some renovation under existing building permits. I'd like to move on to show you some pictures to give you a clear idea of what the home looks like. If it's okay with the board for me to switch to the photos.
Proceed.
And these are, these are different, Nikki, than the five sheets of photos that were A3 dated July 12th, 2021?
Correct. These are included in this set, but I have an additional four pictures which show the home in an earlier stage, taken in around, taken in September of 2020 by the client, by the applicant.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we mark this set as A6?
How many, Nikki? There's four, I think, right?
There's four, there's four pictures, yeah.
A6, 1 through 4, Mr. Simon.
Yep.
So this first picture is labeled 18A. I apologize for the numbering. They're not exactly in order, but 18A. This is the front elevation of the house as it was in September 2020. You can see here the staircase leading up to the front door, the front side of the house. We move on to 18B, which is a side elevation. This is the end of the driveway leading to the rear entry garage. You can also see to the right of the garage, the sunroom, which juts out as well as the stone walkway leading to the large patio. 18C is also the rear entry garage. It's a clear picture of that as well as you can see a little bit beyond the sunroom here. And then this 18D is the rear sunroom taken from the patio itself. These are, these are all the A6 exhibit. Moving into the A3 exhibit, photo number one, this is taken in July of 2021 during construction. This is the driveway at the rear of the house. As you can see, there's some construction material in place. Picture number two, the sunroom with the patio, not much change other than you can see the condition here of the lawn, which is not in great condition. Photo number three is the front of the home as it is now.
Nikki, just real quick on that one. I think that's a great one. Another unique part of this lot is the fact that there's a pretty extensive elevation or grade change from front to rear. I just wanted the board to see that. I know you'll talk about that when you do your, your more detailed engineering. But this is a great depiction of another unique characteristic of this lot.
This is picture number four. It's an additional view of the sunroom and patio. And this again, photo number five is another view of the garage as it is, as it was in July. So this, Mr. Simon, would be, I guess this is A3, I'm sorry, A5?
A5, sheet two.
Sheet two, the site.
So these are all the, the sheet setter dated July 16th, 2021?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the date? Can we repeat that?
July 16th, 2021. Is that accurate for A5?
I think it's July 23rd.
23rd, 2021.
All right, so the record should reflect that A5 is dated July 23rd, 2021, consisting of three sheets.
Correct.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. So what is planned for this site is basically the installation of a Hampton style pool. It's an 18 by 40, 18 foot wide by 40 foot long pool with a three foot concrete patio all around. Surrounding that will be grass. In order to install the pool, we'll be removing all of the asphalt that's back here. You could see the dash line here depicts where the asphalt is, all that impervious areas coming out. The stone walkway that is here currently is coming out as well as the stone patio. We're looking to reconfigure, as was mentioned earlier, the garage so that the garage becomes a side entry garage. We're looking at installing an elevator in the house and that will be discussed more in detail by the architect. We're looking at installing new sidewalk. So the sidewalk coming from the street will be eliminated. We now have a sidewalk connecting the driveway to the front door. We'll have a new paver patio in the rear. I know it's labeled rear porch. That is incorrect. It is a 15 foot by approximately 30 foot paver patio. There is also another little addition here to the footprint of the house. It just assists with the floor layout. Again, the architect will, will get into that during his testimony. We're looking at putting in a six foot high white privacy fence all around the site, which will be connected to the garage. We'll have a little gate here. Some screening. We're thinking about green giant arbivideae to help screen the site from neighboring homes.
Nikki, the pool would be compliant with, I'm sorry, the fence would be compliant with pool code, correct?
Yes, the fence is compliant with the pool code. The pool is compliant as an accessory use with a setback of 12 feet, which is what's permitted in the zone. The sunroom is going to be eliminated. I should have said that earlier. The sunroom is eliminated to put in this patio as well as the elevator. And the last is this pad, seven foot by three foot concrete pad for pool equipment, which will also be screened by the six foot high fence as well as the landscaping that's proposed around it.
Now, Nikki, let's talk about the, the location of the, of the, of the pool equipment there. So that's specifically, that's one of our variances and that was added since the first iteration to now. What other options were explored for locating those, those pool, the pool equipment? And why is it that those other options were rejected and this site is proposed?
Well, the main location that we looked at was putting it on the left side of the building.
And that's where the other mechanicals are for the home, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. The problem with that is really access. The access, we feel, to this gate and to the driveway is a lot better suited for the pool as well as the distance between the pool itself and the pool equipment.
There was another location which was reviewed and that was the location, I'll call it, where it says proposed garage addition. Yes, right there. That was reviewed as well and rejected as well, correct?
It was rejected as well. We feel that that's not an appropriate place for pool equipment given you have the, you know, walkway right next to it and it's really close to this corner of the patio.
Children and family would be traversing in that area and there would be a possibility that, you know, it could be affected by, you know, whatever, just passerby is correct?
Correct.
Now, if we put it on the other side of the house where the other mechanicals are, I don't know if you know exactly, but could you tell us how many feet of piping and of tubing and of everything else that is required would be needed to be installed? And how much of the yard would need to be disturbed to accomplish that?
Well, you need at least two lines going back and forth to the pool equipment. It's about 200 feet each way.
Okay. And the location that we have selected, that location allows for ease of maintenance for someone to come in to maintain the equipment. They go in the gate. There isn't a lot of interference with the family or the yard. for someone to come in to maintain the equipment. They go in the gate. There isn't a lot of interference with the family or the yard. That would seem to be the, the, the best location from that perspective, correct?
That is correct.
Now, if you can go back to, I think it was, I don't even know what the numbers are now.
Mr. First, let me interrupt you just for a second. Can, can Nikki, can you just identify with regard to this variance for the pool equipment location, what the variance is?
Certainly. So the section reference is 609.1E as it relates to the pool equipment. As you know, the proposed pool itself is considered an accessory use. It's a permitted accessory use. 609.1E states that the minimum setback for all supportive equipment for an accessory use should equal three times the accessory setback. Which in our case, if the accessory setback is 12 feet for the pool, the setback for the pool equipment needs to be 36 feet. There is a caveat, not a caveat, but an alternative where it could be within five feet of the structure if it's within the rear yard. We don't have a location within the rear yard that's five feet or less from our building. Therefore, it needs to be 36 feet away according to my interpretation.
And, and what, what is the proposed measurement?
It's five feet from the side lot line.
And it's seven feet by three feet pad, Mr. Simon?
Thank you.
And I know it's not on the plan, Nikki, but certainly there would be some, I know you have generalized arborvitae here. In terms of the aesthetic though, as well as the, the noise coming from that, would the, would we include some plantings and some additional, you know, shrubbery or or any kind of foliage to, you know, lessen the aesthetic impact to the family and also any kind of noise impact to any neighbor that might be there?
Yes, we could certainly plant, you know, at least around the three sides of the pool equipment. Yes, we can put in additional shrubs or, you know, something, you know, not as high as the arbivideae, but less than the height of the fence, let's say.
And we still would have that fence there as well, which would block it from the neighbor. Now, if you go back to, I think it was A1, which was that overhead view, the Google map view or whatever it may have been. So can you show the board based on A1 where that pad would be located?
The pad would be located approximately here. I don't know if you want me to draw on this, but it's.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, it's, it's on the driveway side of the adjoining property and in between the driveway and our site, we do have a woody-type area, marsh-like area, which would also help buffer any noise coming from the pool equipment. It's quite, it's not on the living space side of the adjoining house.
So near this location, it says lot three, so we'll go below that. We see three cars. To the left of those cars, that's an existing like little wooded area, like a foresty area, a little marsh, I think you testified to.
Yes.
And then to the right of those cars, that's the garage area, not the living area of that.
That's correct.
So realistically, and I don't know if you need to go back to the other plan, but can you testify approximately how far that concrete pad and that pool equipment would actually be from the living area of that neighbor's property?
Let me just flip through here. So if we've got 12 feet here, I'm going to make a guesstimate that you are approximately 40 to 50 feet to this face of the building and perhaps 30 feet to this corner.
And we would have the fence and the buffering which would assist and aid in keeping the sound. Of course, they would never be able to see it because of the fence. But that would be an additional buffer, correct?
Correct.
And if we put it on the other side, on the left side of the lot, in that location where the ordinance would allow this to the left on that home, that's actually the living area of that home, is it not?
I, my understanding is yes.
And we can see the driveway on the left side of, of lot one there.
Yes, I do.
So while it is a variance, the reality is that this location is better suited to to decrease or limit any impact that it might have on either neighbor that's in, that's on either side, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. You can continue. I don't know what else you had on the.
I was just gonna read through the variances and the zoning, if you'd like me to go through that.
Sure, that would be great.
So as far as zoning goes, I think you mentioned, Mr. First, that there are five existing non-conformities. I'll just go through them in a little bit of detail. The first is minimum lot depth, where we said 150 feet is required. We have 119.2 of existing and obviously proposed. This is an existing condition that will remain unchanged and is basically non-conforming due to the odd shape of the rear lot line and the, and the frontage of the site itself. The second non-conformity is maximum building coverage, where 14% is required. 16.7 is existing and we're actually reducing the building coverage to 15.4%. So while we are looking for a variance for this, we are reducing the severity of this non-conformance. We have a small change in the FAR, the maximum FAR. 26% is permitted, 30.3% is existing, and we're also reducing the FAR variance to 29.7%. Minimum rear yard unoccupied is the fourth existing non-conformance. Where 25% of the lot area or 6,163 square feet is required. Currently, we have 3,502 square feet. We're proposing 3,383 square feet. And the fifth.
So to clarify that one, that was always confusing to me. So we're increasing the open space in the rear yard by 1,500 square feet, correct?
We're actually decreasing it.
Right, so.
We're decreasing the unoccupied space. So we're actually taking up a little more of the rear yard.
So, so that's an exacerbation. What's the, what's the percentage, please?
The percentage required is 25%.
Right, what's the, what's the proposed?
Percentage, let me go to my zoning chart, please. I don't know that I have that number.
The proposed percentage I have is 19.6%.
Thank you, Mr. First.
Are you okay with, okay, I was going to double check that number. And then the last non-conformity is the maximum lot coverage, where 35% is permitted. We have 36.8% existing and 31.7% proposed, which means we are eliminating the non-conforming condition entirely.
What's, what's the percentage proposed?
31.7.
Thank you.
And then the final variance, which we discussed briefly, is the pool equipment. The pool is a permitted accessory use, has a 12-foot setback as required by code. The minimum setback required for the pool equipment would be 36 feet and we are providing five feet. I also have a conceptual view here, which is your exhibit.
I think it's A2.
There's A2.
Okay, and this is dated July 16th, 2021. So this shows the pool. We have the six-foot vinyl fence going around the house. We're also showing a childproof pool fence, which is an additional safety measure that our applicant may choose to install, although not required, given that the full six-foot fence surrounds the entire property securely. This is your pool pad. This is the new patio, the elevator and the addition and side entry garage. This is basically in plan view what the home will look like.
Thank you, Nikki. Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes Ms. LaLudis's testimony.
Can I just ask real quickly? I see on your, on A2, is that the fence? No, the one you just had up. Is that along the right side property line?
Along the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that might be a line that shouldn't have been there. Let me just check. It is our limit of disturbance. It's a silt fence that would be used for.
Yeah, to clarify, there is no fence proposed along the right side of the property along the driveway. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from board members of this witness?
I have a question.
Yes.
The fence, the part of the fence that connects the left side of the property to the front of the house is what's the distance between that and the street?
Approximately 44 feet.
And, and what's the setback, 40 feet?
Minimum front yard is 40 feet. I'm not sure what it is for fencing, though.
Fence just can't extend beyond the front plane of the house.
The 40 feet.
Okay, but, okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you please tell me the distance of the end of the driveway to the edge of the pool?
It's approximately 15 feet in this, in this location.
And that, I guess it, it shrinks down as you move toward the garage, right?
Correct. It shrinks down to five feet at the corner where it meets the side of the garage. And here, where the gate is, is approximately eight feet.
And that's the, that's the, that's to the sidewalk. The question from Mr. Togger was to the actual pool, I believe. So it's five feet to the concrete, 15 feet to the concrete.
That's fine. And the, and the width of that sidewalk is what?
Three feet.
So practically speaking, you know, where does the, where does the pool furniture go? Where do the chairs go? Where do the tables go? Where does the umbrella go? What, what are the thoughts on that?
I believe the applicant is looking and utilizing this area here to the left of the pool. So you would come and, and you have the patio as well. So you have the outdoor patio as well as this whole area, which is you know, can be used for chairs, lounge chairs, that kind of thing. This is all grass around the pool.
Right, right. So, so what goes on at that far end of the pool is relatively far away from where any supervision might be taking place, right?
If you mean supervision of children?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I have a pool myself and I supervise my children no matter where they are around the pool. I don't know exactly where these chairs are, but they're certainly we have a, we have a pool fence. We have, you know, practically speaking, children should be supervised when they're outside.
Okay, yeah, I don't, that's fine. I, I don't mean to belabor that point. Okay, thank you. You, you answered my question. Thank you.
I have another, I have a question. What, what does the pool equipment entail? Like, how high is it?
Usually you have a pool filter, which is about three feet high, and then you may have a pool heater, which is about three feet square by three or four feet high itself. Sometimes you have a chlorinator. The chlorinator is just a little box that attaches to the piping, so there's really no height to it. It almost looks like a water meter. And maybe a small panel for the electrical, for the, you know, the switch, not the switchgear, the termination switch, so to speak. I'm not a pool person, but I, I have one, so I know it's, it's not very large.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions of the board, I can.
I have, I have, I have one more question. What does this 18 feet mean? 18 feet from where to where?
18 feet is the width of the proposed pool. And 40 feet is the proposed length. It's the actual pool.
It's an 18 by 40 pool, Mr. Steinberg, surrounded by a three-foot concrete pad where, where the chairs and, you know, sitting area would be. And then it's a Hampton-style, so your chaise lounge would then be on the lawn thereafter.
Just a quick question. The pool is 12 feet away from the fence. There's this box, the rectangular box, which is five feet away. I, I can't recall what was said about that. Yes.
This box here, sir, this is the pad for the pool equipment. This is a concrete pad that pool equipment will be placed on. Okay.
So the pumps and the filters and those types of things, and the testimony is that they'd be approximately three foot tall.
And the height of the fence?
It's six feet.
Okay.
Six feet.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question? With regard to what's depicted on the plan, particularly the limit of disturbance, the LOD, yeah, if you can just open it up. It, it appears that actually throughout the site that the limit of disturbance goes right to the property line. Is it your opinion that there will be no encroachment upon neighboring properties in terms of soil, soil or other disturbance to tree roots?
There will be no, there will be no disturbance of tree roots. This LOD basically represents any sort of topsoil that may be placed to repair the grass. The bulk of the work will be for the excavation of the pool, the new garage addition as well as the backyard, but we will not be disturbing anything beyond the property line.
What, what about on the, the bottom right-hand corner, you're depicting trees, right? The J, on lot three, directly adjacent to limited disturbance. Is it your testimony that there be no disturbance to those
That is correct.
To the point that those trees will not be impacted, correct?
That is correct. We're only doing some minor grading in here. These will not be affected, the trees.
Thank you.
Um, so Ludis, and we know, we know where the stockpile would be. Can you just point to that again? And if you could go back to A1, let's just look at that right side of the property and just give everyone an aerial. So there are no trees there to disturb, Mr. Simon.
No, no, I'm talking about the bottom right corner where the, where there are trees on the site plan that are depicted. You go back to the site plan. Jim, yeah, you see those trees right there? 10-inch, 4-inch, 6-inch, 4-inch that are located on the, on lot three. That's what I'm referring to.
Nikki, the only disturbance on that side of the lot would be repaving of the driveway, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Are any other questions from board members for this witness?
I don't hear any. Next witness.
Public, public.
You want to say, Mr. Steinberg, if a member of the public wants to question the witness?
Yes, we can have, we can do that. So anyone in the public who would like to question this witness? Elaine?
I don't see any hands raised, no.
Okay, next witness.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I call Mark Marion as our architect.
Hello?
Where are you? There you are. Would you please raise your right hand?
Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, and for the truth? I do.
Your name and address for the record, please, spell your name.
Uh, Mark Marion, M-A-R-C-M-A-R-I-O-N. And I work with Architecture Plus at 11, 11:30 Route 202, Raritan, New Jersey.
Can we stop with the screen share for now while Mr. Marion gets qualified, please?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding that.
It should be at the bottom.
Middle on the bottom, maybe.
On the bottom. Green button.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna. This is usually much simpler.
Eli, if you have to, just take away her participant status, and I think it'll all disappear.
Still looking for it. Okay, I found it. I'm sorry. Here you go.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Marion, can you give us the benefit of your qualifications, please?
Sure. I'm a graduate of Pratt Institute for the Bachelor of Architecture in nineteen eighty-two. I'm a registered architect since nineteen eighty-nine. And I've been self-employed as a partner at Architecture Plus since nineteen ninety-one. And I've operated out of our current location since nineteen ninety-seven. And I've given expert testimony in over twenty-eight towns in Somerset, Morris, some in Essex. And I'm a licensed architect in good standing.
In the state of New Jersey?
In the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. I'd like to qualify Mr. Marion as a licensed architect and an expert in this matter.
Accepted.
Thank you. I'd like to.
Mr. Marion, let's start with the screen share, and let's show that color elevation for the board, so they know right off the bat what they're, what we're asking for here.
Let me, um. Screen one, screen two. Let's try that.
Hopefully. Are we up to A seven on this?
Yes, and this will be marked as A seven, sheet one and two. And this is a front and a rear elevation of the property. Now, if I can clarify for the board, and we'll have Mr. Marion go over it. There are two changes from the architectural plans that the board has. The first would be the removal of that exterior porch. We now have that exterior patio. And the other would be the location of the elevator will stay the same. But rather than having just a stark square box to enclose an elevator, there is a bit of an architectural detail that has been added by Mr. Dorfman. That will be explained in the testimony, but is not included on the plans that the board has, as that was a recent amendment.
I think I, I do believe I have one more exhibit, and that would be the revised plans that showed the change to the elevator.
Which will mark as A eight when we get them. Let's jump back.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's back up and deal first with A seven. So, Mr. Marion, you, you created A seven comprising of two sheets?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the, what's the date on these?
They would, they would be today, which is ten four, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
I'll email those to the board secretary, Mr. Simon, in the morning.
Thank you.
So, so front elevation, the colored front elevation shows the proposed materials for the front of the house. The existing house was, had a brick facade on all sides. And with, we had to move some of the windows, so rather than keep the brick, we are going to change the house to a white siding with some stone detailing at the base.
What type of material are you using for the siding?
Probably hardy plank.
Or something similar to that.
Similar, like fiber cement siding.
What we can get, yeah.
Yeah. And articulating the front door entry with more of a cover. And we're rotating the garage, which actually shortens the house by about ten, twelve feet to get the side-loaded garage. Having some copper roof accents and re-roofing the whole house with a new asphalt shingle roof. That's pretty much what the front.
Let's go A seven, slide two.
So this is the rear elevation showing, and this is the the rotated garage on this side. This would be the slightly expanded elevator. We tried to put a turret shape on it and add some windows, so it actually looks a lot nicer in this view. This elevator will not be seen from the front. It's really just visible from the rear yard. And most of the windows on the back of this house are existing. We have a small addition to the, this is now going to become the family room. There's a small bump out here, but we're making it slightly larger. And so this is an area of the addition.
Mr. Marion, why did Mr. Dorfman request you put an elevator in this property?
He has elderly parents and in-laws that he plans on having come visit and stay for some time. The house has, the current house has about nine bedrooms. And we're rearranging the inside already, just an alterations. So he'll end up with seven and an additional bathroom. So it's all set up to have extended family.
He's gonna have an in-law suite on the third floor, right, in the rear there?
Up in the attic, yes. And that.
So let's move on to your plans then. This would be marked as A eight. How many sheets is this, Mr. Marion?
It's just one sheet. It's just a revision to the plan that they currently have. And the date is.
What's, which sheet is being revised?
Drawing one on the submitted architectural plans. And it's revised to a date of nine twenty twenty-one. And basically, it shows, I'll zoom in that the shape of the elevator, this is the elevator here, is turned into more of a turret. You also can see the addition in this corner squares off the family room. And this is this new shape of the garage, which really just extends another ten, actually twelve feet out toward the front. And.
But then also shortens the width of the building by the.
Yeah.
Same amount, right?
Yeah, like twelve and a half feet. It, it shortens the building.
So we're changing the loading from the rear to the side, and by doing that, we're able to get rid of all of that asphalt. And we're asking the board to allow us to put a pool basically in that location, correct?
Yeah, that was the way we could reduce everything and and allow for a pool. There's where's the rotation of the garage.
Why don't you take the board just quickly through what the layout of the house is, so I'm sure they're interested a little bit in that.
Sure. On the first floor, there's a three-car garage side-loaded. It comes into a mudroom. And then from the mudroom, you do have access to the elevator and a door to the outside. We have a kitchen, breakfast, and family room. It's all kind of open across the back. But we have a living room in the front. We've opened up the foyer. There used to be a bathroom on top of this foyer. Now the foyer is now two stories. And we moved the dining room to the front. Originally, the house had a very large family room at this location. And to get into the house, you had to go through the sunroom and then kind of either decide where you're going, around the chimney, back into the house, into the kitchen, or into this family room. So we thought the family room would work much better in the back. Upstairs, we've relayed out some bedrooms, but we've moved the master bedroom on top of the relocated garage or the rotated garage as a private office. And we've got two primary bedrooms over here with private bathrooms. You moved the laundry upstairs. And we've got a guest room here. And with that, and there's access to the elevator, a big open foyer. And up in the existing attic there, which is pretty much remaining unchanged, there's three existing bedrooms, two baths. And we're going to connect up that elevator to one of those bedrooms.
And how, how, just go through that real quick again on that third floor. What exists now? And is, is this the same layout that exists now on that?
Yeah, we're doing very little. We are relocating the stairs to get up into this attic. They're existing right here. Right now, we're rotating them. And that's really the only change. All those bedrooms are there. The bathrooms are there. It's a, it's a habitable attic by all definitions. It's not actually a third story.
And that pre-exists. That's there already. We're not.
And in doing all this, we are reducing the floor area ratio by about a hundred and forty-one square feet from the existing size.
And just, I know we've seen the garage side elevation. I don't know that we've seen the other side elevation, just if you want to.
Yeah, we have a side elevation on three-car garage. The master suite's on top, the left side. We've, there's a chimney there that we're removing. The brick is coming off. We're relocating some windows. It's not going to change substantially on the left side.
And you're continuing the same facade, the same materials on the exterior all the way around the property?
That's correct. The siding will wrap all the way around.
And what type of materials will the garage doors be?
Garage, the garage side will also be the hardy plank type fiber cement siding.
And the doors, how about the doors?
New garage doors. They have to be determined, but we're proposing like carriage style. I don't know if they'll be painted or wood at this point, but those would be the obvious choices.
Anything else, Mr. Marion?
That's basically it.
Are there any questions of the, of this witness?
Can I just ask you to clarify, on your plan that I'm looking at right here, you show a patio off the back?
Yes.
And on the Bowman plan, it says porch. So I'm just wanna.
That's, that is correct. At one point in time, I think in that application, I'm going to bring up the drawing you are looking at. This is dated seven, nine twenty-one. So this is the drawing, I believe you have submitted, and there is a porch there, but we have
Taken a move from.
We've removed that.
Okay.
And we're proposing not to do that porch.
Okay.
Any other questions of this witness? Anyone in the audience?
I actually, I have a question. Did you, did you give, I mean, this is a, it's a very large house to begin with, and I understand that you are reducing the floor area ratio somewhat, but did you, you know, give any thought to trying to get it to conform? It just, you know, it's seems to me like, you know, with such a large house that there would be some way that you could get it to actually, you know, be more in conformance with the ordinance.
We did reduce the size of the house. A hundred and forty-one square feet per zoning. We also, we create, actually took away more square feet than were, than that number actually indicates, because we've created a very large two-story area in the foyer. So there, there actually is, which doesn't get reflected the way that you measure FAR, but there's a large hole right now that used to be all. So I'd estimate that's probably a two-hundred square feet that we've actually already taken out of the house and additionally. So.
Mr. Marion, so let me, let me ask you a couple of questions, and hopefully this answers Ms. Glatt's question. In terms of the exterior of the property, in order to reduce the FAR, we really would have had to change the box that we're working within, right? We did a little bit to change the garage, but in order to really reduce the FAR, what do we have to do? We have to shrink the size of the building. And in terms of doing that, this building is located on a foundation. We can't move the foundation with, with regards to this building. So is there anything else that could have been done? I mean, I guess we could have cut the roof down or something like that, but realistically, what we're working with is a box, and we're just changing the interior of the box, correct?
Correct. I mean, our client bought a house that was of a certain size, and although we did reduce the size of the house to, to to lessen the impact on the zoning in terms of like, to try and bring this house into conformance, which is a house that he purchased, seemed a little excessive. And he, you know, it was a nine-bedroom house with, which we've reduced to seven.
I mean, you'd have to make major engineering changes, right?
Yeah.
Like, let's say you took the left side of the house and shrunk it by like fifteen feet. You'd likewise have to then repour the foundation to accommodate the new wall that would then allow for a smaller building to conform with FAR. Am I oversimplifying that, or is that about right?
Well, we wanted to rotate the garage ninety degrees, and so the garage footprint is there, so as an impact on the property. And it's existing two stories, and we kept it.
So you're saying by changing, by changing the garage, because you shifted the position, I mean, that definitely added on what it, what was.
It didn't add on. It, it reduced. We, we actually reduced the FAR on the house and the coverage. But we, we just basically took the shape of the garage, that the existing shape, and just rotated it. We didn't really increase its size. And the big reduction, and one of the big reductions was taking off the sunroom off the back. We, we removed, I don't know exactly the square footage, but I can estimate that to be about almost two-hundred square feet that we took off by removing that. Granted, we did have an additional, a small areas to expand the family room to make it an appropriate-sized family room for this house. And we added the elevator.
How much square footage is the elevator? How much does that add on?
It's rough, you know, without the corners chopped off, it's roughly six by nine, so it's not very much.
Eileen, I'm just a question for you. The, the third floor, the, the attic, is that counted as part of the FAR? Not if it's less than fifty percent of the second floor, which I believe it is. So it was, it is not counted in the. It is not counted.
Yeah, we looked at that. That's why I said even if we took the roof off, it wouldn't really.
Yeah, we could take.
Without leveling this building and starting over with a new foundation, it was really not much that Mr. Dorfman could do to shrink the size of the house. And in fairness to it, you know, this is a house that's appropriate for the neighborhood. All the other houses are similarly sized in this neighborhood. So it's not like it's, you know, it's the one big house. They're all very substantial in the area.
And I could also state that we are making the house ten feet shorter than it currently is, so its impact on the street is substantially lessened.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? Anyone in the audience have any questions of this witness?
I see none.
Mr. First, do you have any other witnesses?
I do not, Mr. Steinberg. If I could hear the board comment, and then perhaps just have a three-minute summation, that would be greatly appreciated.
Are there any comments from board members?
We can open it up to the public.
Mr. Marion, we start the screen share.
Yes, is, is there anyone in the public who wants to speak to this matter?
I have no one.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we hear the summation before we close the public portion?
No, we, we, the, the way it works is that the, the public has a chance to make comments, and once the public is done, typically we have the attorney making a summation, if an attorney is participating in the matter, prior to board deliberation or vote.
That's, that's what I just said. Should we have the summation before we close the public portion?
No, 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 but the, the summation, no, what I'm saying, Steve, is that the summation comes aft, from the attorney, comes after the public, after the public is given an opportunity to participate in the matter.
Yeah, so again, you are saying the exact same thing.
That's exactly what Steve just said.
I think what Mr. Simon's point is, is that the public session is concluded. I had asked to speak after board deliberation. I will retract that, and I will speak now, since the public portion of the meeting has now concluded.
I misunderstood.
I got you back, Mr. Simon. So, members of the board, this is certainly a large home. We heard it was nine bedrooms as it pre, as it exists. Um, so uh, members of the board, uh, this uh is certainly a large home. We heard it was nine bedrooms as it pre, as it exists. Um, but it's a lot in a neighborhood that can uh handle uh this type of home. Uh, most of the homes in this neighborhood, I'm sure you're familiar, I'm sure you're driven by. Uh, most of the homes in this neighborhood are of this size and stature. Many, if not most, of the homes on this street uh have a pool similar to the pool that Mr. Dorfman is requesting. He's taken great care uh to address the aesthetic concerns uh that others might have with regards to the look and feel of the rear and the elevator. Uh, he's taken great concerns to try to uh, keep the things that he has control over under control. Uh, specifically by uh, by removing that large area of asphalt in the rear. Uh, he's able to bring one variance uh into conformity, uh, and he now uh has a conforming lot uh, as it comes to coverage, which I know is always a great concern, especially in a situation like we just saw with the flooding. It's good to have that kind of uh, of, of coverage down. Uh, in terms of the FAR, as Ms. Glatt had mentioned, uh, that certainly is one that I know is always a great concern, and that's why that's a D variance. It's more important. We understand that that's more important. Uh, so I want the board to understand that, you know, I spoke to the architect, we spoke to the engineer, I've worked with Mr. Dorfman on it. Uh, to try to get that FAR down, uh, we talked about, you know, closing off the third floor uh, to see, okay, do we really need seven? Is five not enough? Uh, but that's not gonna help us. Um, you know, we moved the garage along a little bit, uh, took off the uh, the rear covered porch. Um, but really, short of a bulldozer and knocking a portion of this house down, and then having to reframe and the disturbance that that would cause to the neighborhood, to the trees, you see the slope on the property, uh, it's almost unrealistic. Uh, certainly nearly price prohibitive uh for Mr. Dorfman to do that. Um, and it's not a variance that he's asking for. He's actually reducing that. Uh, the variance that he's asking for uh is with regards to the rear yard, uh, and the other one with regards to the neighbor and the pool equipment. Uh, he took great care to consider that, you know, if we have a two-hundred-foot run of piping under the ground, there's so much problem that could go with that. Uh, to have that located off to the side, out of the area where his family and his friends will congregate and traverse, to have that available easily to maintenance people, uh, to properly fence in that area. Uh, you know, the neighbor is not near that area, and that home next to it would certainly never see nor likely never hear any of this pool equipment functioning. Uh, so I hope the board sees that uh, the efforts by Mr. Dorfman are such that he's trying to be a good neighbor, uh, he's trying to reduce where he can. Uh, he's stuck in terms of location on the lot, he's stuck in terms of a short rear yard. Uh, he's stuck in terms of a lot of things, uh, but he does wanna build a beautiful home, and he's hopeful to be able to do it and move to Melbourne very soon. So thank you very much, board members. Good to see you all.
Is it too um, to ask questions again of the architect?
The applicant technically rested, but I think if Mr. First is asked.
No objection.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, so I have two questions.
Wait, wait, let's bring, let's bring uh the architect back.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Okay, go ahead.
What's the outside dimensions of the elevator?
It's uh, five foot ten by nine foot five.
Is that typical of a residential elevator? It seems long.
It is quite large. Usually, an elevator is like five by six, but what it created was a large narrow three-story tower on the back of the house, so we just widened it out.
Why don't you pull that A-seven up for us, just so we can, so Ms. Segal can see it. A-seven rear elevation sheet two.
Uh, can you see that?
Yeah.
Great, so that's this tower right here. So we widened it out, really, it was quite narrow at this point, so we fattened it up a little bit. This is really just for aesthetics, and we put some windows in to make it not feel like this large, narrow uh structure on the
Otherwise, it was just a big square tower sticking out of the back of the house, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was there for utility to get the elevator in, but this makes it feel, I think, uh.
Okay, as a follow-up, why don't you just put, I mean, residential elevator is never that big. Why don't you just put it inside? Seems like you have plenty of space inside.
We looked at a lot of places to find the elevator, to find a spot for the elevator inside, and this, this spot connected all the floors in the, in a way that uh Mr. Dorfman liked. So in terms of, it's off the uh it's off the mudroom.
Yeah, no, I'm just because of what Jessica had brought up about um, the D variance, that F R. But what was the outside dimensions again? Is it nine by nine? Is that what you said?
Uh, no, it's five, five foot ten by nine foot five.
And if we didn't have this additional uh aesthetic facade, what would the dimension be?
It would be uh roughly five, five by six would be. So it's not a substantial increase in size, it's quite de minimis. I, I think it might add ten to twenty square feet.
As an architect, you felt it was a fair trade-off to have a little bit more of square footage, size-wise, FAR-wise, in exchange for what is a little more aesthetically pleasing if anyone wanted to notice. You can't even see it from the street, right?
It's definitely more aesthetic.
Well, if it's about nine by six, it's more like fifty-four feet, fifty-five feet, something like that. But anyway, can I, my other question is, can you go back to the site plan that you had, looking from above?
I do, uh, I just have the floor plans, so I do not have a site plan.
So what I, I'm just
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, Joy, to interrupt you. Uh, Mr. First, maybe you can have your other witness put up the uh site plan sheet that Ms. Segal wants to refer to.
I could stop sharing.
Nikki, there?
Okay, so my question, okay, the, the edge of the garage, the new proposed rotated garage, the distance from the front to the front property, is that the same as the existing? Cuz my impression was that the existing was further back, but is that just misreading? Can you, can I see an existing site plan?
Let me just open that up again. I believe I closed it by accident, um.
They, they added a third bay to the garage, so it is closer to the front.
It definitely is closer, but it's still, the, it's, it's still within the setback, and it's still further back than the actual existing.
Okay, but it is closer.
Correct, absolutely, absolutely.
In terms of if there was any attempt made to eliminate the D variance, that would be placed, putting it further back, and I'm making a two-car garage, right?
Yeah, we still have the variance.
Wait, 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 why don't you have Mr.
Mr. Marion.
testify as to that, please.
Mr. Marion, what was the size of that one additional bay that's to the front of the home?
It's not really an additional bay, cuz it, the existing garage is a three-car garage. We conceptually took that through existing three-car garage and just rotated it as a concept, so it's the
Okay, so conceptually rotated, but realistically, it now is closer to the street, and that is, it's not, it's conforming though. The distance is still conforming.
Absolutely conforming.
But as um I, I'm just trying to kind of, um, I guess pick up on a little bit what Jessica left off. Is it at all possible to not have a D variance for this? And I see two areas that I think it is possible, like going
Marion, if we were to do that, would that, would that then solve our D variance issue? Uh, we gotta go down to twenty-six percent here.
Well, how many square feet are you over?
But is a hundred and forty-one, or no?
No.
No, we are reducing the
You're reducing the FAR by a hundred and forty-one.
Forty-one square feet, that's correct.
We're over by
But you still, so now you're twenty-nine point seven, but you need to be twenty-six, is that right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so the garage, that seems like about uh ten by twenty, right? I don't know, so I'm not sure what the numbers are.
Nikki, can you do that math for me? How many actual square feet do we need to actually be conforming? I think it's like, it's like fifteen.
Right now. We need gross uh FAR sixty-four ten. Sixty-four ten, um, let's say divided by two for all intents and purposes, it's thirty-two hundred footprint. And right now, we are at
You'd have to think about it, you'd have to take about a thousand square feet out of the house.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a four-digit number for certain. So even if we were to reduce this, and this is not a two-car garage house, people, uh, it's, 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 you know, it's a three-car garage house, and that wouldn't, still wouldn't solve our problem. Um, I, I honestly, Mr. Marion, myself, and Mrs. Lutus, and Mrs. Dorfman turned this thing upside down to really try to figure it out, cuz I know, I served on a board in Westwood for twelve years. I know what the FAR means to this board. It's the volume of the home, it's the size and scope of this home, but realistically, without a bulldozer, there really is no way that we're gonna make this house conforming. We can squeeze a little bit here, we could take away the aesthetic feature of the, of the uh, of the elevator, that would give us, you know, fifty there. I could take another hundred out of the garage and squeeze that down, but we're still, generally speaking, we're still gonna have a very, very large house. And the only way to get it to conform is bringing it, is, is bringing a bulldozer.
This house, I believe, because it's shorter, will have a much less impact from the street. It's gonna feel smaller than the existing house. It is a big house, it's surrounded by a big house, it's appropriate house. If you look at the first floor plan, I'd be happy to show it to you again. There's no real, like, excess rooms on the first floor. It's really a living room, a dining room, a foyer, a family room, kitchen, a breakfast area, and a mudroom. They're all generous, but that is really the existing livable footprint of this house. So we were, we're working with a house that's already over the ordinance, but giving up a thousand square feet and taking a three-car to a two-car, I think is kind of onerous to an owner. Uh, to, to big, it's a big ask.
I, I mean, I, I understand that maybe that's a big ask, but I, I also feel like what's being asked of us is a big ask. Um, you know, I, I mean, it's just kind of like, you know, you, you want everything, you know, you, you want us to agree to the to the pool and, and the, the stuff in the backyard and the location of the pool equipment. Um, you know, that you, you, you know, then you want us to agree to this huge house with an elevator added on, I mean
If, 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 let's, let's, let's
Let me just finish, that you can't, you're not gonna take a three-car garage and turn it into a two-car garage. And you said maybe, you know, we'll take off a hundred square feet of the, you know, garage, and then we'll take off like the aesthetic features of the elevator. What about just getting rid of the elevator? Um, you know, and, and taking off those one hundred square feet, um, possibly not adding on that, that area you know, in, in the rear, the, the, the rear, you know, addition that's being proposed, like, you know.
Ms. Glatt, we still wouldn't conform to FAR on that one. And you know what, I had, I had a conversation with Mr. Dorfman about it, and, you know, like I, I said to him, I said, you know, like, there, there could be definitely a situation where the board may want you to squeeze a little more. Um, and you know, we, we, we had a little bit of a disagreement on whether this should be a Hampton's Pool, or whether or not he should add a little more to then have something to give up. Uh, and I know what you're asking for, is that you feel like we're asking for everything, but in the planning, and what I counseled Mr. Dorfman on, was to do certain things that I felt will be the negotiation points for the board. Instead of a three-foot uh surround on that pool, you know, perhaps one of those sides, we had an iteration of it where it was ten feet, so we could have the shades lounges. And that then took us over on coverage. You know, there were a couple of different things where we could have had it in here and then said, oh, hey, we'll give up on that, but I suggested that Mr. Dorfman not do that. I know this board is very busy, and we wanted to come with basically what was a real plan that Mr. Dorfman could live with, and, you know, one that was, is, is realistically, uh, from an FAR perspective, realistically and livably, uh, yes, could we take another few hundred feet off here or there? Could he get rid of the elevator? Absolutely. But when you have FAR, in my opinion, FAR, so when you look from the street, you see the size of a home. If we were to take off the elevator, no one's gonna see that, cuz it's in the rear of the home. If we were to take off the squaring off of the family room, no one's gonna see that, cuz it's in the rear of the home. So to achieve what you want really doesn't satisfy the goal, which is the FAR should make this home just feel a little smaller from the streetscape, uh, by shrinking it down, by decreasing the width of this home by ten feet, I think is gonna be a huge, huge difference than if we left it the way it was, left the FAR exactly the way it was, and just redid the facade. Uh, you know, it would seem bigger, way bigger, uh, than, you know, than what we're proposing. We really, really did try. I get it, I get it. Uh, we really did try to figure out how I could come before this board and say, we have no FAR variance, but I just could not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to negotiate here. It's not about, you know, you, you taking off a little here, a little there. I'm just still concerned that, you know, looking at these plans, that it's just too big to um, you know, for, for this site to accommodate. I mean, I know you said that it's, you know, that, that the whole neighborhood is like this, but I mean, I have driven to see this house, I've walked the property, I've walked the neighborhood, and um, you know, I just, I just disagree. I don't, I don't think that this house um blends in, you know, where, where it stands, and I'm just, I, I'm curious to get other board members' opinions. Um, because I'm just, I'm just concerned that, you know, we're, we're trying to squeeze too much onto um, a, a property that just can't handle, you know, everything, so.
Should we close the public portion then, Joe?
Well, the, the public, uh, I, I believe that Mr. First has, in essence, rested, and Ms. Segal had asked a couple of follow-up questions as has Ms. Glatt, and I believe that Mr. First, or the applicant's witnesses, or witness, Mr. Marion, has addressed those. So unless there's anything else that the board wishes to ask Mr. Marion or any of Mr. First witnesses at, at this point, um, I think it's time, and the public has had an opportunity to speak on this matter. I think it's time for a board deliberation.
Mr. Simon, just one point in order. I do think you need to offer to the public additional time to question them. Just, I wanna get a good record here.
So, um, what Mr. First, I believe, is referring to is that because the, the matter was reopened for some additional testimony from, from Mr. Marion, um, that it'd be appropriate, under the circumstances, to again, open it up to the public to see if there's any other questions for the public, from the public, excuse me. Or comments regarding this application.
Joe, you're muted.
I don't have a problem doing that. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience?
No.
Eileen?
There are none.
All right, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting, and now turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Um, Steinberg, before, um, it's time for, cuz it's now time for deliberation to vote. Let me just remind the board that what we're dealing with here are a number of bulk variances as well as an FAR variance, which is a variance under forty-five fifty-five D dash seventy D four municipal land use law. Um, that requires five affirmative votes out of seven, and what they are, uh, by virtue of this D four FAR variance, they're proposing an increase in the permitted floor area ratio. Um, as this board is aware, that the board's focus must be on whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with the proposed FAR. But with a larger FAR than what's permitted by, by the ordinance. And uh, very oftentimes, a consideration is whether uh, conditions can be imposed in approving an FAR variance to ensure that the deviations from the FAR requirement do not cause substantial detriment to the public good or to the intent and purpose of the master plan and the zoning ordinance, so it was whether the proposal is, uh, can be reconciled uh with the zone. And certainly, um, with regard to the negative criteria that you're aware of, it's whether um, the application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This is for the uh bulk variance as well, and also uh, no substantial impairment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. So, um
Just for the record, the, the FAR is a pre-existing non-conforming. Sorry, is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
So, for the record, the FAR is a pre-existing non-conforming that the applicant has actually reduced. Is that right?
That's correct.
That is correct.
I just wanna make sure that that's clear. Okay, thank you.
Yep, but, but, but the, the criteria, the
Let's do this. Let's have board members focus first uh, in terms of their comments on the FAR, because that's gonna be a separate vote. Where five votes out of seven are gonna be required. So let's first comment, if we, if we can, please, on the FAR request. on the FAR request, which is for 29.2, which is basically a little more than 10% over the required. Required is 26%. Uh, 10% would be 28.6. And the applicant is at 29.2. I think my math is correct on that. So, let's talk first, if we might, about the FAR.
Can I just ask, Rob, what, what were you about to say about the FAR? I just want to make sure that we're all.
So, notwithstanding the fact that the FAR is actually being reduced as part of this application, which should be taken into consideration, certainly, as well as all the other evidence that was submitted by the applicant. They, the applicant technically still needs to obtain an FAR variance because what is being submitted, the application for development, still technically exceeds the required, uh, or permitted, excuse me, FAR.
Board members, comments on the FAR?
Is it 29.7 or 29.2?
I have 29.2.
It's, it was increased to 29.7 was the final submissions.
Is that the final submission? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mr. Steinberg. The application that you're looking at was done early in March. And then the July 23rd, 2021 plan has the FAR at 29.7, which is the final submission and the request for relief for Mr. Dorfman. And just while I have the microphone, if, if we are denied, then the house stays the same and it's larger than we're proposing.
Wolfgang, do you have, you have a comment?
Looking through, just looking through the various applications here. I mean, with respect to the FAR, I mean, having looked at the property a few times, it, I appreciate the fact that the applicant has reduced, you know, the burden that's already existing. I think it's a, I, I, I like the design. I, I don't have a problem with the FAR as it is, as they're proposing it.
Any other comments from board members? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm on the FAR, I'm, uh, I'm in agreement with Wolfgang. I actually, overall, I don't support the application, especially not the pool. But on the FAR, I mean, I'm, generally, I'm not in favor of penalizing an applicant for a pre-existing non-conforming, especially when this is not a situ, if they had actually torn down the house and rebuilt it and came to us looking for an FAR with a house that's 4,000, with a, a lot that's over 4,000 square feet oversized, then I would have a, a big issue. But I think that the applicant has taken some steps, at least in some regard, to address the FAR. So I, I personally can support the FAR.
I, 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 uh, yeah, I appreciate that the applicant has, um, you know, taken steps to reduce the FAR. I still feel that it's too big. And I think the massing of the house overall is too big. I'm having a hard time pinpointing, uh, uh, you know, and I, it's not my job to be the architect to try to redesign the house. But I don't know if it was moving the garage to the current location and flipping it. It's just adding on to the massing and just making it seem so big, even though you're taking a, a, a large house and actually making it smaller. But there's just something about it that, uh, you know, I, I, I just, I, I, you know, I, I have a problem with the FAR. I'm not saying that you need to get rid of it entirely, but, um, as it stands, I, I have a problem with it.
I completely concur with what Jessica is saying, although I do appreciate that the applicant has tried to reduce the FAR. But I think there is potential to further reduce it down, not completely remove it, but further make it lower. A, as it stands right now, it, it's just very huge.
Anyone else? All right, on the FAR, yes, Troy.
I was going to say that I would agree. And I think by, um, moving the garage closer to the street, it's not just on the ground floor, it continues up. And I feel that that's made the, that's going to make the massing seem even greater on a, what seems like an already very, um, overbuilt site.
I, I also just want to add, you know, with the elevator in the back, that although you won't see it from the street, what about seeing it from, you know, the, the property behind the house? Um, you know, I just, I just think overall it's just too, too big.
Let me just comment on that, yes. My recollection from one of my visits is that the property in the rear is at a completely different level. It's, it's, it's far down, it's so that it's down a hill. That's my recollection anyway. So that I don't see that the people in that house are going to really ever see this, this house much. Am I right or wrong about that? Isn't the house in the rear at a different level, further, farther, way farther down? In any event, let me just proceed. Mr. First, I'm going to ask now for a, uh, a motion to either accept or decline the FAR request. Do you, so I'll give you one chance. Do you want to proceed with, with my asking for that motion?
Uh, by my count, I don't think I have it, so I don't think so. Um, would we have an opportunity to not withdraw our application, but to take into consideration, uh, the statements of Ms. Sharma, Ms. Glatt, and Ms. Siegel? Uh, see if we can attempt to tweak it, uh, and come back to the board at some future date where there's availability for us to show a revised plan?
The answer is yes.
Thank you, we'll take that option, Mr. Steinberg.
Fine. Eileen, uh, once again, we're going to ask you if there's a date on which the, the applicant can come back. Now, you're going to need some time, Mr. First, correct?
Uh, yes, and I understand that the board's agenda is jammed. So whatever Ms. David can accommodate for us, it would certainly wouldn't be a full presentation again. Uh, we would come back merely with the architecturals adjusted in some manner, uh, so that, you know, we could accommodate the concerns of the board in terms of size. I don't know that I can change the pool location for Mr. Togger. We'll just have to deal with that when we get to that point.
Eileen?
I, I, I'm at a loss here, I don't know. Um.
Of the December 6th meeting?
Is that a question? It's already in the Kaya Center.
It's already done.
So the next date is December 20th.
Mr. First, December 20?
You know.
I'd love to come back in two weeks, but I,
I mean, I have, I have three months. I, I can't do.
I would like it to be this year because the board's going to change in January.
So, I'm, I'm assuming, Mr. First, as you stated, that because your presentation is going to be limited, I, I believe, based on what, what you've heard, or I'm guessing it's going to be limited, that you're not going to need a lot of time to make any type of revised presentation, correct?
Uh, that, that's absolutely correct. And when I present the revised plans, I'll also include a summary written statement of what the changes are so that the board will know in advance what has been done. Uh, a summary, so to speak, from the architect. And I think that would even further reduce the amount of time that we would need, uh, to present. Because obviously, the board is going to review the application and, you know, basically hear what I'm going to say or read what I'm going to say in advance. So yes, Mr. Simon, I would love to say I could do it in 15 minutes, but we all know that, that, you know, we know how these things work.
Right, but, but, but also for the benefit of,
If that's the case, I could, I could, if you want to put them on for the 18th, that's, that's two weeks.
18th of December?
Of October.
No, no, of October.
Of October.
You know.
And I think that might be beneficial, Mr. Chairman, to the board members who will still have the testimony fresh in their minds
Yeah.
as opposed to a long delay.
Uh, okay. Do you think you can get it done by then?
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's just make a statement now for the public and for the record. This matter is going to be, it's, which is, let me give you the, uh,
3792 dash 21.
Say it again?
3792 dash 21, that's the application number, calendar number.
There's going to be a turn without further publication or notice to the evening of October 18th, 2021. And that will be at a Zoom meeting, Zoom platform, as this one has been. And Mr. First, we look forward to getting any documentation in advance of that meeting.
We will have everyone working overtime and by candlelight, Mr. Steinberg. Thank you very much, board members, for your time.
Hey, wait, wait, wait.
For accommodating this, uh, this requirement.
Before, before we're done, let's just be clear, it's at 7 o'clock on October 18th, uh, via the Zoom platform, no further notice will be provided by the applicant. And in terms of if there's going to be revisions to the plans, Mr. Chairman, do you have a, an, any opinion as to when you would like Mr. First's client to make those submissions as revised?
I would like them made by the end of the first calendar week of October.
Which would be this week.
This is this week.
If I have to, I'll personally deliver them to everyone. If we could have maybe seven days preceding that meeting, so that would be the 18th, if we could do it by the 11th, and I will volunteer to personally drive around Short Hills and Milburn and drop them all in your, in your homes.
You'll have to,
Town Hall is closed on the 11th, so.
Pardon me?
Town Hall is closed on that Monday, so.
Closed on the 11th.
Yeah.
I'd say, let's do, let's do the 12th.
Okay.
October 12th.
We will make that happen, thank you.
Terrific.
Eileen, you need, do you want 10 sets or do you just want, they're going to be such minor revisions? You want email only or you want full sealed sets?
Of the revisions?
Yes.
Just give me the re, you know, the re, whatever you're advising. I don't need, um, full sets.
Okay, great. All right, Mark, got some work to do. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
You're welcome. Okay, the next matter we're going to hear tonight.
Yeah, I, I, Eileen, just make sure for Mr. Mr. First, I'm sorry, Mr. Steinberg, that Mr. First, um, provides any requisite, uh, extension of time?
Extension of time, absolutely, I will.
Uh, the next matter is the Coue matter. And, uh, I noticed something that I think is correct. I mentioned it briefly to Eileen David today. Rob, I did not mention it to you. But I believe if you look at the Coue matters, the papers, that the notice that was provided to the public, uh, mentioned one app, one request twice. I think I'm correct on that. If I can just get the elastic around this matter, I can turn to the other one and tell you which one it is. But I don't, as Eileen pointed out to me today, uh, that is, uh, it's not as if they left something out. I think they mentioned something twice in the notice, the same item. And I, and if I look at the,
I, I don't see it twice, I see lot coverage, building coverage, floor area ratio, accessory use side yard, accessory use rear yard, rear yard unoccupied, accessory use coverage.
Well.
E, e- even if there's a variance request that is mentioned twice, that does not render the notice effective.
Okay, that's fine. So I think it's moot as to whether you're correct, Eileen, or I'm correct. Um, but it's irrelevant. Okay, is there someone here representing the applicant or are the applicants here?
Uh, the applicant is here and Tom Baio is coming in. It's not working.
Yeah. Sorry, my video doesn't seem to be working at the moment. Uh, good evening, thank you, uh, for your time tonight.
Hold up.
Can you hear me?
Wait, 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 wait. If you're, um, if you're going to be providing testimony in support of the application, there you go. It always works.
For some reason, um, I don't know if it's, there's got to, some, Tom is,
I, uh, Highland Avenue, uh, trying to take some adjustments.
Hold on.
Wait a minute.
We can't, your turn, your architect. I don't know if he's there. There we go, okay, should be. There he is, okay.
Am I here?
There you go.
Yes.
Just raise your right hands, please. Mr. Cou, you also. You swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom here, it be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Your names for the record, please spell your name.
Brian Cou, B-R-I-A-N-K-O.
And Thomas Baio, B-A-I-O, architect.
All right, Mr. Cou, you want to proceed? Mr. Cou?
Who's going to start?
It keeps frozen. Sorry, we have, we're having bad, uh, internet connection, I apologize.
Uh, I can, I can start just to keep, you know, the speed going.
Let's give you, let's, let's first your qualifications.
Sure, uh, I'm Thomas Baio, licensed architect, state of New Jersey for 30 years, since 1991. I'm a 1987 graduate of New York Institute of Technology in Old Westbury, New York. I remain in good standing with the State Board of Architects of New Jersey.
As of this day.
As of this day.
Your qualifications are acceptable.
Thank you. So,
Before you begin, I just want to, Craig Plutner has returned to the meeting, just so that, that's on the record. Welcome back.
Okay. Um, Eileen, I'm going to share a screen and I'll try to rifle through this. There's a lot of variances, um, but maybe as I explain it, um, some of them won't appear as, as severe. Can I share my screen?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, maximize this. So, if you could see that?
Nope.
We cannot see anything.
Okay, let's try it again. Share screen.
That one.
Share. Is that clear?
Yep, there we are, not bad.
All right.
Yeah.
What we have here is a historic home built in,
Okay, wait, 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 hold on, Mr. Baio. To the extent that there are exhibits that you're showing the board and the public that have not been submitted to the board to date, we need to mark them. So, so has, has this been submitted?
No.
Okay, so why don't we mark what you've put on the screen as a 1? And I'm going to ask you, to the extent that there are exhibits that you are introducing this evening that have not been provided to the public or to the board to date, that you make them, uh, available to Ms. David tomorrow?
Certainly, I can walk them over.
Great, so we're going to mark this as a 1, and what is a 1 that we're looking at?
It is a front picture of the home as depicted from Highland Avenue.
Did you take this yourself?
This picture was not taken by me, it was provided to me by Barton Ross from the Historic Preservation Commission.
And do you know approximately when this photo was taken?
This photo was taken approximately March of last year, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
May I proceed?
Yes.
Proceed.
Okay, so this is a eighteen ninety-six Hartshorn House, unnamed, other than knowing it as a Queen Anne. It was the subject of a May twenty twenty approval before the Historic Preservation Commission, and it is seeking two big changes. I'm going to use my pointer here. The first is to put a dormer over the garage as I'm illustrating on my screen. And the second, which I'll get to, is to build a mudroom behind the house. With that said, let me go to the, this is a copy of the approval from May twenty twenty, and I'll now call this Exhibit A two as I put this, so this is the Barton Ross letter of approval, that is marked as A two.
Hey, this was not submitted with the application?
I don't think that was submitted with the application.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
This is, so this is, wait, wait, can you go back to that, please, for a second?
I'm sorry.
So.
This is the approval of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, but, but but it says it's addressed to the members of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Well, there's a full resolution. This was the letter from Barton Ross memorializing the approval. The approval was in February. Okay, I want to move on.
Move on.
Okay, very good, thank you. I want to bring this up in the agenda, which I noticed posted. Particularly on our calendar number, it says violation of one, two, three, four, five, six variances. I have noticed that we are in violation of seven variances. Mr. Steinberg, I don't know if this speaks to the point you brought up, but the notice that was posted only shows six. I know for a fact that we have seven. The one missing on this one is the building coverage, which is six oh six point two E two A. Sort of a side part, I was going to give you some corrections. This is the first of the, the three things that I, I noticed.
Give us the other two first.
Oh, okay, tho- those are on my plans. Let me just make sure I find the right drawing right here. Okay, so I'm going to point everyone to the cover sheet. And on the cover sheet is a copy of the survey, and it's worth knowing that the survey inaccurately depicts the property right here as having point three acres. I went through, the reason we have been delayed for months getting before your board is because the actual square footage of the property is only eleven thousand five hundred and fifty and not thirteen thousand six fifty-one, because this survey is taken to the center of Highland Avenue. So, not sure anyone picked that up, but I thought I'd bring it to your attention. The second thing is the Historic Preservation Approval required that we eliminate this eighty-four square foot turnaround. This is not in my numbers, but the note remained on the cover sheet. And I just want to point out that it is not relevant to this application right now, it's not being proposed. And the third, the third is the actual, we're not doing anything on the second floor, but the actual square footage of the second floor is not sixteen oh four, but rather fifteen eighty-eight. It doesn't change the numbers, it just is a sidebar. It's fifteen eighty-eight, we're not touching it, but I thought I'd bring it up to you. Okay, moving on with the application, we're.
Mr. Mr. Baio, hold on a second. I just want to talk to you about this, the, the first thing you mentioned regarding the lot area.
Yes.
So, so i- is it your position that the lot area as depicted on the submitted plans is inaccurate?
No, the lot area, which I've used in all my tabulations, is up here, it's eleven thousand five fifty. This survey depicts it as point three one three of an acre, which calculates to thirteen thousand six fifty-one. When I first submitted the applications, we used the wrong number. This area right here in front of the right of way is in the square footage of this particular surveyor's lot. It's just not accurate.
Okay, Eileen, Eileen.
Yes.
For purposes of determining lot area, is one to exclude the area within the right of way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simon. I'll go into my second point, I just was correcting that the area of the second floor, it's irrelevant, is off by sixteen square feet on this particular cover sheet. And that this note, which spoke to a turnaround, was not granted by the HPC and is therefore not being requested here, it's irrelevant. All right, and I'll jump into my application. Our application seeks to add a mudroom to the rear of the home. The mudroom, there's currently a small entranceway in the rear of the home, it is twenty-nine square feet, we're going to knock that off. Let me see if I can find where it's shown on my existing. It's this little box right here. We're going to be taking that off and building a larger mudroom. The Coues have several children, and the need of a mudroom is paramount. Most homes that we're doing today are adding larger mudrooms, they really need it to have a mudroom. So the application's primary driver is to do this mudroom, which adds to the floor area, the building coverage, the lot coverage, yada, yada. The second, I'm going to, I'm going to scroll down to Sheet A five, is to take a garage structure. Too far, right there. And add this dormer. The purpose of these two dormers is just to be able to get a car lift it high enough where he can put a car up on the second tier within this garage. They're rather small issues, but in this garage, both property lines, I'm going to go back to the survey, really encroach, close to this garage, the back corner and the front corner are both one point nine two feet. So the, the adding of a dormer, not for space reasons, just for internal air reasons, is in violation of the left side and the rear side yard setback. So that makes up two of the variances, have to do with this dormer. So we have the mudroom addition, and we have these two dormers. That is really the project. However, Mr. Koo's property is set back quite significantly at sixty-eight feet. So his rear yard suffers having a lot of square footage. So anything we do to add a mudroom on or to put this little landing area outside of the side door of the garage, really brings up the other two variances, accessory use coverage and rear yard unoccupied. Both of them are, are, are weakened, there, where, or, 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 or conformance is reduced. And then finally, the, the physical addition of this mudroom brings up a floor area ratio requirement, sorry, let me find this right here. So the adding on of this mudroom takes the floor area of the house, where thirty percent is allowed, up to thirty-five percent. Now, I will point out that the property is eleven thousand five hundred and fifty square feet. Had it been fourteen thousand five hundred, which is the R five requirement, this FAR would only be twenty-seven point nine in a zone that supports thirty percent. So it's really the square footage of the property that gets us, both on FAR and on building coverage. So the, of the three remaining variances, lot coverage, building coverage, and FAR, two of them are most adversely impacted by the smallness of the property relative to the zone. Right there. That is really a very brief description of what we're seeking. We're seeking to put dormers for airspace into the garage and this mudroom addition. Thank you.
Are there any questions of this witness?
Sure. Tom, I just want to clarify a couple of things. You know, you said in your testimony, hang on, let's pull this up here, that you're going from thirty to thirty-five. That's not true. You're, you're, do you currently conform?
No, I'm sorry. I was going off the, off the maximum required is thirty, and we were going for thirty-five.
So you, so you're really, you're really going up a lot less than that?
Oh, yeah, current house is currently thirty-four percent, and we're going to thirty-five point one four with this expansion. We're increasing it by one point one four.
But your five hundred ninety-four square foot deviation, does that include the correct square footage of the second floor? Or should actually be reduced, should that be reduced by the sixteen square feet?
No, 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 no. It, it's the correct square footage. The total, the total expansion of the home is one hundred and forty-one square feet. Let me just find my notes right here. Yeah, one hundred and forty-one square feet. That is the size of this mudroom. Minus the credit I get for taking off that other former entranceway. So just going down here.
So you're really going from thirty-four to thirty-five, not thirty to thirty-five?
Correct. Thirty is the maximum allowed, so we're really going from thirty-four to thirty-five. Thank you for correcting that clarification.
Can, can you also speak to lot coverage? I, I think something I'm looking at doesn't look accurate in terms of what the extent of the variance is.
Sure, the lot coverage increase is two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. It's made up of fourteen square feet of this triangular deck. See, right now, this deck is cut at a triangle, and the purpose of this mudroom door is to get in here. So it's made up of fourteen square feet of triangular deck, twenty-eight square feet of steps that don't currently exist, that's on grassy area, one hundred and seventy square feet of the addition, minus twenty-nine of what used to be the mudroom, this former box right here. The garage pad, I'll scroll down to the garage drawings. This is the landing pad just outside of the garage right here. That's forty-four square feet. And then a couple of square feet for AC condensers that we're adding on as part of this, and they are located right here.
Right, so in terms of percentage, what percentage are you over what is permitted?
The current lot coverage is thirty-nine percent, whereas the zone only permits thirty-five percent. The proposed usage is taking that to forty-eight point eight percent. It's a, it's an increase in the lot coverage of two hundred and sixty-nine square feet, made up one seventy-one of the, of the new addition and all those little elements I just gave you.
Right, so thirteen point eight percent over what's allowed, right?
Yes. Yes, again, it's a, it's, it's an undersized lot, so the, the numbers are all grossly exaggerated because of the undersized nature.
Que- question, though. It's saying that the existing usage on the lot coverage, and this is kind of taking off of what Ms. Lawrence was just saying, it says that the existing usage is at thirty-nine percent?
The existing home lot coverage is fifty-three seventy. It's made up of this driveway, this house, this current garage, a deck that surrounds it, and a couple of walkways.
That's forty-six and a half percent.
That gets to forty-eight point eight percent, fifty-six thirty-nine on the lot coverage.
No, no, I'm talking existing.
I'm talking about existing, the existing, I'm sorry, the existing house is fifty-three seventy.
Which is forty-six and a half percent.
Oh, not thirty-nine percent? Hold on, let me get my calculator. I may have written that wrong on I, on the, on the attachment E submission. Fifty-three seventy divided by eleven five fifty is, yeah, oh, my goodness, you're correct. Thank you. It's forty-six point five percent, not thirty-nine.
Right, so it's going to go from forty-six point five to forty-eight point eight.
Yes, correction, thank you very much. Yeah, an increase of two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. How I got that wrong? Okay, so. All right, thank you.
I'm confused.
So, so Mr. Mr. Baio, just to be clear, what you have depicted on the zoning table for maximum lot coverage in terms of existing lot coverage, you have thirty-nine percent as existing, and what it should be is forty-six point five percent exist.
Right, I want to put up what box we're talking about. So we're talking about Attachment E right here, and that number in this box for the existing, I had thirty-nine percent, it's really forty-six point five. So it, it lessens the grossness of the increase, because thirty-nine going to forty-eight point eight is significant, and I didn't pick that up.
Right, and then also at the end, the extent of the variance is not, it's calculated as seven point eight on your sheet. Right?
Well, yeah, it should be.
So it's the whole line?
It's the whole line, yeah.
Three percent is the ver- is the difference.
Yeah, yeah.
I think your FAR percentage calc is off too, but as long as the square footage is right, I think we're good.
I, I, I don't know that the existing square footage is totally correct, actually.
Thirty-nine.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not, we're not going to sit here tonight and redo the schedule.
Well, Joe, Joe, it's not so much redoing the schedule, it's the percentages are off, but that, the, the square footage looks to be correct.
Thirty, it should be thirty-nine eighteen, I think, existing.
The proposed is the same. What I misrepresented was the existing percentages. I was wrong on the lot coverage. The FAR was just that sixteen square feet of the second floor that I just corrected, but the proposed is actually correct.
Wait, wait one second. Go to the accessory use side yard setback. Why are there two items there that are identical?
Well, one reflects the rear yard, and one reflects the side yard. And I'm circling them on my screen.
They're two different variances.
Yeah, two different variances.
They just happen to be the same.
All right.
Tom, forgetting the percentages, are your numbers correct in terms of your lot coverage, your floor area ratio, and that, and what you're seeking?
Yes.
That's the most important thing.
Yes, just that my percentage is on the lot coverage was, was off.
Mr. Baio, do you have anything further?
I, I, I don't. You know, just to, you know, repeat, we're taking a home that is, most of what we're seeking approval on is not, not going to be visible from the street. You may see this dormer because this picture will show it, but it's, we, you know, the mudroom is a perfectly it's, it's actually one of the few rooms in a house that's been growing over the last twenty-five years. They really do need it.
Okay, I have two questions. One of the documents said that you were adding a portico in the front?
Yeah, we were approved for the reconstruction of this thing. It's this, yeah.
Approved by whom?
The Historic Preservation Commission. Let's show you my, let me go to my plans here. And I'll see if I can, because this, this is the actual HPC documents. So go down here. Just have, this is the front elevation in which.
Wait, 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 Mr. Baio, you have to identify what plan you're referring to and confirm that the board has a copy of it, which I believe they do.
They do. This is in the, this is A four of the submitted architectural documents, and it speaks to this, this front, you know, the reconstruction of this front. It's a little dilapidated, as seen in this picture here. And we're, we're placing on this little bracket and slight overhang right there. It's coming out. Let me see if I can find a sign elevation. That's back. That's, that's. Yeah, it's not really visible. So what it is, is it's, they call it a portico. Yeah, it's not really visible. So what it is, is it's, they call it a portico. But it's really the reconstruction of these things, right here, along with this little uh extended area right here. It's, it comes out like a few inches. It's not really shown on the elevation.
So there's no effect on zoning from that?
No, 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 not at all. But I, I mentioned it because we had to get HPC approval for this front, cause it does affect the streets, the street-facing facade.
And, and just to, my other question is just to clarify, the um, the dormers that are being proposed for the garage, those are initiating two of the variances? The ones that are.
Those speak to um accessory use side and rear yard setback.
Okay, so if, if um the dormers were not proposed, those two variants wouldn't be there?
Yeah, if these dormers were not proposed, then, see, Mr. Koo's driveway is very narrow, so he wants to be able to put a car in here and then lift it up. He has a sports car. He's a successful dentist and he drive, you know, they have an extra car, and it was a solution was just to place it up on a rack. But they, yeah, but those two speak directly to side and rear yard, you know, setback.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Steinberg? Uh, Mr. Baio, are you, given the historic, the seemingly historic nature of this home, are you able to reduce the FAR or lot coverage deviations from what you're proposing today?
So, your question is, could I make this mudroom any smaller?
Or, or, or reduce the, the size of the home in any other area?
Oh my goodness, no, from a historic, no, th- these four corners is part of the integrity of the historic uh property. Now, we, we're not looking to um, we, you can't, you can't. I wouldn't even knock off this bay, cause it has historical merits. So I can't reduce this. What you're asking, I think, is can I reduce this? I- is that correct?
I, I, I'm just asking generally, you can answer it any way you want, whether there's any way to reduce the FAR deviation and the lot coverage deviation.
The only way to reduce um both of those is to downsize the mudroom. The mudroom is proposed to be twelve by fourteen, and it's driven by one dimension, which is the minimum I need to get the, the stair into the basement and still have a door to the deck. So this dimension is kind of fixated by those two principles. The width was regulated by the location of this window, we couldn't go any wider. It is possible to bring this side in a foot or two. It's rather inconsequential. This is a mudroom on one floor only and likely doesn't um the, it, it probably doesn't destroy the Koo's lifestyle by bringing this in a little bit, and that goes directly to reducing the FAR.
You were already pre-existing over the FAR, correct?
Yes, we're already pre-existing off um, uh with the FAR, but our total new coverage of this structure will go from like one forty-one, let's say I brought it in a foot, it would go fourteen square feet less. So it would go from one forty-one to one twenty-seven.
But also because this is a historic house, you can't start taking random areas of the house and cutting them out because you wouldn't be allowed to do that, correct?
Oh, absolutely, goodness, that would be the worst, that would be the worst outcome. This is already a um, it's, it's not an overwhelmingly large home in the neighborhood. It's um, it's okay, it's just a historic old home from eighteen ninety-six. So we tucked the mudroom in back. If the board is compelled to um look favorably upon the proposal, if I make this less wide by a foot, it sounds a little tokenish, but it wouldn't affect adversely the uh, the mudroom performance, and it would bring my numbers down, if that's a viewpoint that the board would like to hold.
You don't have to negotiate with yourself, Tom.
Okay, thanks Craig. I was addressing the attorney's request.
No, it wasn't a request, I, I was just asking a question.
Okay.
Any other questions of this witness? Any other witnesses in this case?
No, there's no one else, it's just myself and the, and the hallway.
Is there anyone in the public who has a question for this witness? Eileen? You wanna take this drawing down, please?
Yes, sir.
No one has raised their hand. There are no questions from the public.
Uh, Mr. Baio, do you have a, before I close the public portion of the meeting, do you have any closing statements?
Well, Mr. Steinberg, can we maybe just open it up to the public if anyone has a comment with regard to the application?
Eileen said there was no one in the audience.
Uh, there was no one with questions, um, I don't know. No, no one.
I don't have any closing statements, Mr. Steinberg. It, it's a long night for you guys. Um, it's an undersized property, we've done the additions in the back. No, nothing more to add.
So, so as this.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, are there any comments that any of you would like to make?
Let, let me just remind the board that, again, this is an FAR variance that requires five affirmative votes, five out of seven. Um, I went through, and um I don't think I need to repeat in terms of the um burden of proof of, of the applicant in terms of what needs to be demonstrated for a uh FAR variance under forty point fifty-five D to S seventy D four, in terms of both the po- both the positive criteria, namely that the site can accommodate the deviation with regard to the FAR. Um, and then of course, the negative criteria that you're familiar with in terms of sub- no substantial detriment to the public good or no substantial impairments of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and there's also um a bunch of uh bulk variances uh that you may choose to uh consider under the C one standard, uh given the fact that uh, of the undersigned its nature of the property and the existing conditions, and that this is a historic property. Thank you.
And the floor area ratio being a D variance is gonna require five votes out of seven, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, if I am correct, I'm looking at the uh Schedule E that was filed with the board. Um, at, at the floor area ratio, the existing is thirty-four percent. The maximum allowed is thirty percent. The proposed is thirty-five point one-four percent. The, the extent of the deviation is now it states five point one-four percent. Is, is it not really? Since it's already at thirty-four percent, is it one point one-four percent? Like, that's, that's a hypothetical question, doesn't have to be answered. Anyone else have a comment on this case?
I'll go first. So, probably one point this house might have had more property. Um, who knows what was spun off over the years and how it was subdivided. Uh, I think this is a thoughtful project. Uh, at the end of the day, um, as opposed to the D variance, it is in the rear of the house, so it's not really affecting the neighbors and as such, and uh, the, 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 the massing can certainly be accommodated by the lot. As for the C variances, you know, it's really a function of the fact that this lot is so undersized for the zone. It was an old Victorian house and, and uh, when, probably when it was built, the zoning wasn't ever thought about. So this is what you deal with today in trying to modernize the house. It's by no means a large project, it's, it's modest in nature and uh I think it's a reasonable addition to make the house a little bit more modern in today's standards as you come from the garage, a place to put your shoes and muddy stuff from the kids and not have to drag it into the kitchen, so I wholeheartedly support this project.
Anyone else have a comment?
I do. Okay, I, I'll be quick. Um, I, I have a little bit of a different perspective. Um, I under, I, I completely understand it's an undersized lot, but I, I, I do have concern about some of the increases, you know, in in FAR and, and particularly in lot coverage. And when I was thinking about the lot coverage, and I thought, well, what if this was a conforming lot? What if it was, you know, fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, which is an average lot? And when I do that math, unless I'm wrong, um, at the existing fifty-three seventy square feet, that's already, you know, if it were a conforming lot, it's already over the lot coverage. And so now we're increasing it beyond that, and I, I don't think I, I would support that. Um, I think, you know, it's already quite, um, it, it, it's covering a large portion of the lot, and I don't think that supports the zoning.
Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused about those um, those calculations, but uh, that being said, I, I agree with what Craig said. Um, I, I think that the lot can absolutely um handle the increase in size. I think it was very tastefully done. Um, I think the applicant really has, um, they have their hands tied, because this is a historic property. And um, you know, the, the massing and the coverage just doesn't, doesn't concern me, so I support the application.
I would just speak up echoing the sentiments of Ms. Glad and Mr. Plutner. It's a, it's a modest increase which is being proposed, and the fact that it is an old resident, it's residents and their office complications with bringing it up to, you know, to modern standards, I think it's been done in a very tasteful way. I think the law can support this, and I would support the application.
Anyone else?
I would, I would echo the sentiment uh of Wolfgang, Craig and Jessica. Uh, I think it's a modest increase and uh pretty tastefully done, so uh absolutely in support of uh the proposed change.
And we're going to, anyone else? All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion on the floor area ratio only, the D variance, remember. Five votes is required.
I'll make a motion to approve D variance, floor area ratio.
Second.
Wolfgang.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now I'm gonna ask for a motion on the other variances, of which there are one, two, three, four, five, six. For a motion on the C variances.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time today.
You're welcome. Now let's move to the next matter on the agenda, which is Sag Harry, uh ninety Undercliff. This is calendar thirty-eight sixteen dash twenty-one. Who's appearing in this case? Who the applicants?
I, I don't know.
Good evening, board. Hello, do you hear me?
Yes. Do you have any experts?
Oh, my name is Hamid Sagari, I'm an architect licensed in uh state of New York. But in this case, I'm representing as the owner. And I don't have any business.
Hey, what, if you would just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from the testimony about to give me tonight, zoom here, to the truth, whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Just stay your name and spell your name for the record, please.
Hamid Reza Sagari, H A M I D R E Z A S A G H A R I.
Proceed.
Uh, thank you for having us. Tonight I'm representing uh myself and my family for a property that we have on ninety Undercliff. It's a, a small property. We purchased and we are planning to do some alteration to fit our rather large family. If you allow me to share the screen, I will explain what we wanna do and where we're coming from.
Proceed.
Eileen?
How many variances are requested on this site?
What's that?
How many variances are you seeking on this site?
Oh, most of the variances because the existing site is not confirmed.
Okay, cause you, cause your attachment E doesn't jive with what is listed on the notice.
So you, you see my screen now, yes?
Is that the actual notice? That wasn't the actual notice that was sent out?
No. Eileen, do you have a copy of what the notice was that was sent out?
Yes.
And, and what, what relief was requested by the applicant per the notice?
Front yard setback. Side yard setback to eighteen feet, side yard setback above eighteen feet, floor area ratio. It's kind of hard to say, but yeah, front yard, side yard, side yard above eighteen, um, floor area. One, two, three, four.
Okay, cause the attachment E only has a front yard setback. Okay.
So, what you see here on this elevation, this is a rather small house, we have.
Sir, sir, all, all we're seeing right now on the screen is notice.
We're not seeing where you're.
Your notice up.
Do you see now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we are looking at drawing A two O one. Drawing A two O one shows the existing vest elevation. If you look at the front, we have a small uh attic on the top of the first floor. We want to add to this attic and raise it to the, to be, to add a living uh bedroom to the ter- to the second floor. So this, this area is the area that we are uh trying to raise in the floor plan.
Sir, is what you're referring to by way of the, of the elevations and floor plans, what you submitted to the board with the uh last revision date of, looks like March twenty-six, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, but, one of the uh variants I'm requesting is to raise this area and add a living room to second floor and this, which is here. To reduce the effect of the height of the building, I I sloped all four sides of the roof. So there is less effect on the street. The second variant I'm asking for is we have a garage entering from the side. I would like to have the garage entering from the front, which makes this area nonconfirming. I want to add this area, this little area to the house in first floor. So this is gonna be the front. I want to have a garage entering from a street. I want to add this area to the attic, and that's the extent of it. Oh, if you want me to go over the numbers, the building coverage right now is 19.7%. We are proposing 21.8. Allow this 23%, so we are still under building coverage, lot coverage. We are 2.7% right now because we are reducing the driveway. We're gonna reduce the lot coverage by 30.6. Allow this 45%, so we are under. Building height is almost to say the same. We have 26. We're gonna have 27.7. Allow this 32. Floor area right now is 30.9. We're gonna increase it to 37.2. Allow is 36. So here we're gonna go over the floor area ratio. The other side variances is what we already have at the side back of the building that we are not touching. We have seven, required eight. Oh, here, we are not touching. We have whatever we have. We have 32. It's gonna stay 32. The only area that we are changing is this area, this little hash area.
Eileen, is a variance needed for front facing garage in this zone?
No, not in this zone.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
I couldn't hear either.
He wanted to know if there was a variance for a front facing garage in this.
Yes.
He said no.
Right. What's that?
According to the papers that were filed with the board, he was seeking only one variance.
The, if you look at my attachment B, which is the denial letter, there wasn't updated attachment A, which there were a lot of different versions of this before I finally got it to the board. I don't know that, um.
I, you know,
I think when it initially got sent to you, it had the original. So you have the front yard setback, which is 15.3 on Undercliffe, 32.8 on Wallway. Um, the side yard setback, additional side yard setback, and then the floor area ratio. Which are
Eileen, or the four variances that you just laid out that you're showing right here, I don't know. Yeah, I haven't seen this. Is this reflected on the applicant's plans?
This was in the application, yes. Um.
I don't have an attachment B in my set of papers.
I don't either. Me either.
I do not.
I don't either.
Unfortunately, when they give me the copies, I'm assuming that they have made copies of everything. Because I don't typically go through all the copies.
I believe we did, but because it changed from personal to Zoom and maybe it's lost. But this is what we are asking now. And I think it was, actually, this is what Eileen wrote on her application. So.
Well, I've been on this board for many years. And I look at attachment E to determine what the applicant is looking for. And as pointed out by one of the other board members, on attachment E, I see one variance.
Attachment E, I don't know which attachment E. What attachment do you?
Well, I'm looking at, it's first on the website. That's the most current one. Right? I mean,
Yes.
That's the only place I see it, really.
This is what I, yeah, I mean.
Well, this is attachment E that you have, the one that I have on the screen right now?
We never received it, but it is
This is what I have. But what I'm saying is I don't, when I get the copies, you know, assuming that the copies are exactly what the application is.
Yes, so attachment E is correct on the website. It's just not correct in our package, so.
This is correct. What you're seeing right now is attachment E as I
Right, yeah, I just pulled it off the Melbourne website, so now I have in front of me.
Well, you pulled it off the website, but that's not what the board members are accustomed to doing.
Well, it's right here. This is it right here.
Well.
I think it comes down to whether the board members are comfortable in reviewing this application, given the information that was provided to them prior to the hearing, coupled with information that's presented to them for the first time tonight. And that's the board's call, that you can take a straw poll as to whether you're comfortable based on the information provided to you this evening and proceeding, or not.
I just want to say we are trying to get this application in from May, and it was really tough with the Corona and the last minute changes in, from in person to Zoom. And I really hope you can review it the way it is because postponing it to December, it's gonna be really tough financially.
Board members, I will tell you what my personal view is. I rely on what I get from Eileen. And I looked at attachment E. I saw this as a one variance case. I am not comfortable reviewing the rest of this stuff, especially a floor area, floor area ratio variance tonight for the first time. I would vote against the application if I had to vote tonight. I would much prefer to put this matter off.
So at this point, if anyone is so inclined, you could take a straw poll vote.
I would like to take a straw poll vote. Can we get this document off the screen, please? Our board members, of those who are voting tonight, who is willing to go forward on this case tonight? Show of hands.
Oh, wait.
I see three hands. I see four hands who are not prepared to go forward.
There's five raised.
Pardon me?
There were five raised. Jessica, Joy, Craig.
Joy, Jody. Craig. Who are the others?
I'm not voting, but Kandrew's hands up, so I'll put mine up, too. I would do it. Six prepared to go forward.
I'm not prepared to go forward.
I was saying for not prepared to go forward tonight. So is Joe and Jody.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or a comment they would like to make?
I see no hands.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Word members. Apparently, you guys want to go forward for this matter.
I don't feel comfortable going forward if there's two board members that are uncomfortable. I don't know how to explain that. Like, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, can I ask, Rob, in a case like that, would it defer to the alternates or would we? I'm not sure how to handle this.
No, no, no. There's no, this is not a question of a board member recusing themselves. This is a question of a board member honestly expressing his or her opinion with regard to proceeding with the application. And the applicant needs to understand that for purposes of getting an FAR variance, which he is required to seek, that he needs five affirmative votes, which means five of seven. Which means that if three board members that are eligible to vote do not vote in your favor, it is a denial. So even if you get four votes in favor and three votes not in favor, it's a loss for the applicant. You need five affirmative votes. So the question that, for the applicant, given the comments of Ms. Sharma, Mr. Steinberg, Ms. Siegel, is whether the applicant wishes to proceed, given it sounds like there's no member of the public who wishes to question or comment, whether the applicant is comfortable proceeding with a board deliberation and vote based on the comments so far, or whether the applicant on its own has the right and wishes to carry the meeting or adjourn the meeting to another day to provide all the board members an opportunity to review the complete application.
Mr. Simon, I completely understand, and I completely understand Mr. Steinberg's concern. The only thing is we waited months to get to this meeting. I have no idea what happened to these documents. But it took months. I delivered 130 notice for in-person meeting, and then we changed it to Zoom meeting. It's a lot of pressure on our family. The only thing I, if I may ask, is if you don't take the meeting tonight, please give me a time a little closer, not next year or December. And what I can do, my FAR variance is 1%. I can reduce it not to even go to the floor area ratio variance, to A variance.
Eileen, if this matter were to be adjourned, when could it be heard?
The soonest we can hear it would be November 15.
November 15.
If it's the soonest we can hear it, I'm okay with that. It looks like I don't have any other choice.
The applicant has to understand that all the accurate, correct paperwork has to be distributed to the board members, and that's his responsibility.
Yes, sir. I understand.
I mean, it is on the website. I realize that's somewhat not the normal way we do it. But just, when I go through these cases, I'm pulling up the data from the website during the case. I'm not relying on any of the paperwork. So it's sometimes more convenient just to poke at the PDS as we go along, rather than this. I'm not saying that that's an excuse for this. I'm just merely saying it's a great aid than going through the documents.
Well, I'm glad you're not saying it's an excuse. Because it is, it is not.
No.
Okay. Mr. Psych Harry, it's your call. Do you want to hold this matter till November? What's the date, Eileen?
It would be November 15, 2021. It's 7 o'clock PM via Zoom with no further notice to be provided.
I am very comfortable with that. Thank you for consideration, and thank you for giving me a date.
This matter is going to be continued without further notice or notice or publication by the applicant to the board's meeting of November 15, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And, excuse me. As I said, with no further notice being provided by the applicant.
Eileen, do we need an extension of time? Mr. Sagari, to the extent that the board needs an extension of time within which to render a decision on this application, are you willing to extend the time through the end of November, understanding that the next date is November 15?
I do not understand what does that mean.
So, under the municipal land use law, an applicant has the right to have a case heard within a certain period of time from the time an application is deemed complete. While Ms. David is looking for the date that the application was deemed complete, I'm asking you if you consent to carry any determination, which is typically done by an applicant through the end of November for a decision. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next case.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Sagari. To the extent that you are interested in submitting any revised plans, whether they pertain to reducing FAR or otherwise, typically, the board would require that those plans be, as revised, be submitted at least 10 days prior to the hearing.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
The next case. This calendar, 3822-21. It's at 99. I can't read this. I think it's 978 South Orange Avenue. And the applicant is And the applicant is. Allison.
Hello. Hi.
Yes, sir.
If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give him tonight's hearing to view the truth, full truth, and for the truth?
I do.
Your name for the record, please spell your name.
Proceed.
Good evening, board. Thank you for taking time to hear the appeal. Um, this house, uh, is on South Orange Avenue. Um, we have a, a property that does not have much of a backyard. Most of the house is, uh, the yard is to the front and to the side, um, for which case I have two kids, um, planning on getting a dog. Um, so this is, um, again, to build a fence around the house in the front of the house. The code is, um, to allow four feet, um, but I'm requesting for a six-foot house, um, fence, um, in the front section of the house.
Why is four feet not sufficient?
So like I said, there's not a lot of, um, backyard. We've been, uh, using the front yard and my two kids. Um, and also thinking of getting a dog. It's, um, most of the time we spend in the front. Um, and it's not, um, private enough and, uh, we, the kids, again, they jump and run around with their, uh, small little tables. Four feet seems to be accessible to the top of it, um, for the kids. So I feel much more comfortable. My, uh, family feels much more comfortable with six feet of the fence in the front.
What type of fence?
Vinile fence.
A what?
Vinile PVC vinyl fence.
Okay.
Um, flexible if the board has any preferences on that. I just need a fence.
Do any of your neighbors have a fence?
Um, yes, sir. The house right next to my, um, house has a six-foot fence.
They have a six-foot fence.
And, um, I've seen multiple properties. Uh, we, we recently moved to, um, Short Hills last December, actually. Uh, I have seen multiple houses on this, um, road, South Orange Avenue, um, have six-foot fence.
Is the, um, is the other houses with six-foot fences, uh, in the front yard?
Both in the front yard, backyard. Uh, yes, all, there's a mix of that.
Board members, any further questions of this witness?
Just, just, yeah, well, gang. It just a couple of questions. The fence, just to, just to clarify, it's going to be right outside the tree line, correct?
Um, the fence is going to be, um, towards the house. Yes, um, on the tree line. Yes.
So towards, uh, so are you saying on the inside of the tree line then?
Um, the, the tree line is much closer to it. It's going to be the outside. So some of the area is going, so there's a paver in front of the, uh, it's going to be inside the paver with, after the tree line, outside the tree line.
Outside the tree line. And when you say vinyl fence, is, are the, is the, are the slats right next to each other? Like, so there's no visibility through the fence?
Yes, it's privacy fence. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
What, what's the color and material of the fence?
Uh, PVC vinyl white.
Frank. I, I don't recall seeing any other fences, front-facing fences in the vicinity of your house on South Orange Avenue. I'm just trying to Google them now to see if I can see any. Um, I, I. Do other board members have a recollection of seeing other front yard fences along that area? Do Wolfgang, yeah?
I do. I thought actually to the east, I thought, if I'm recalling correctly, I thought the two residences to the east had fencing along, it looked to be six-foot fencing along South Orange Avenue.
Yeah, I can see it on Google, too.
Wait, he's allowed to have a front yard fence because it's a county road, right? It's just a matter of four feet, six. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this, will this be like a, a solid fence? Or is it hickets? A solid?
Solid.
No, not, so no, no visual, no air between.
Privacy, privacy fence, yes.
Six feet.
Six feet.
What's the difference to, why is six feet safer than four feet for you?
My, my two kids, um, we have, we don't have a backyard. They're playing in the front yard. When they toss a ball or run around, um, or jump on a table or on those four feet is still, um, I'm not, we are not very comfortable. It's still on the front road. It's completely visible. It doesn't provide that, uh, height, uh, and we have, we want to, um, spend more time there in the yard. That's the small, the, the lot is pretty, um, it has a weird shape, so it's mostly on the side to the left of it and the front of it. That's where we have more space for, for the family.
But, but you plan on putting the fence outside the tree line. So when kids are playing ball, they're not, you know, the tree line is stopping the ball. It's nothing, it's not that. You just want more privacy, right?
Privacy, yes. Definitely, yes. The privacy is a big, uh, reason for it. Uh, the tree line is not like a bushy one that we have. There are gaps in the tree lines.
Yeah, but it's not where our ball is going to be going. The, you know, that's not, that's not the issue.
Priv, privacy is, uh, is a primary ask, yes.
How, how far, uh, inside the property line do you have this? Are you planning this fence?
Um, I, I can, as, I can limit to the code. If the code has any, uh, uh, specification, I can definitely go. But what I have submitted, pardon me, give me one second. I'm going to review the application. I've actually indicated the distance, um, from the paver.
Any other questions from board members?
It's, uh, what color is the fence? What color is it?
White.
Ha, have you considered landscaping? Uh, if privacy is one of your concerns, have you considered more dense landscaping? To provide some.
So the, the, the shape of the, um, lot, we, like I said, there are some bigger trees and we did plant some small herbs and, um, uh, shrubs, evergreens, um, in the front in that, between those, um, that's there. But kids would not, um, they, they find it most amusing there, to go there, to the border of that, too, and, uh, will not be able to. We would definitely go for a four-foot fence at the very least. Um, but, uh, I, I, I would think when we're going there, six feet will provide us most value for us.
Do you, I have another question. Have you considered putting the fence on the inside of the existing shrubbery?
Um, the front door after that, um, um, the, there's not a lot of space, um, that, that we are already probably going like, um, uh, I don't. I think it is, um, from the, from the paver, we are going inside the paver like at least, uh, four feet or five feet, uh, further inside. The pavers and the shrubs go like twelve feet, I would say, or like fifteen feet. If I go further in, there's not a lot of room that would defeat my, the, the yard. Might lose most of the yard there.
Are you looking at the entire length of your front yard?
The entire length of the yard.
Which is what about? I don't know if I can tell them, how, how long is that?
Um, should be.
I'll say about, it's over two hundred.
It's a, yeah, most of the house and the yard is facing to the front and that, that's the, that's the way the yard is.
Hmm. It's a long front line.
Yeah.
Any other questions of this witness? To anyone in the audience who has any questions of this witness?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments he or she would like to make before I close the public portion of the meeting?
No.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Members, comments?
I think that, um, since the applicant is allowed to have a fence in that location, um, in the front anyway, um, it's a busy street and, you know, extending the fence by an additional two feet, um, duh, you know, to, for, for privacy and safety sake, doesn't, doesn't bother me. So I support the application.
So I, I would argue that there's no foot traffic on there at all, right? So it's really just cars going by. And given the, the amount of existing foliage and coverage and the ability to add more, I think you, you'll get, you'll address any kind of safety concerns or balls going out of the yard with a four-foot fence.
I, I would agree with Steve as well that, uh, I think with landscaping and a four-foot fence, uh, the, the objectives can be met in this case. So I don't see a need for a six-foot fence.
Is there a motion either to deny or accept or permit?
I'll move to, um, approve it.
There's a, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second? Do I see your hand up?
If I'm allowed to.
Is Chandru, he's not eligible to vote.
He's not voting on this, no.
Is there a motion to deny?
I move to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I've heard a second.
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Segal?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Wyatt?
No.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The application is denied. Next application. And hopefully the last one of the evening. Is, um, Two Deerfields Road, calendar fifty-eight, twenty-five dash twenty-one. Sonia Singh. The applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give him tonight's Zoom hearing to view the truth, full truth, and for the truth?
I do.
I do. Just state your names for the record, spelling your names, please.
Sonia Singh. S.O.N.I.A.S.I.N.G.H. Two Deerfield Road, Short Hills.
Anand Pradhan. A.N.A.N.D. Last name is P.R.A.D.H.A.N.
Who's going to testify here?
Testify, but I also have our contractor, Al, for any technical questions if there are.
Proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is our first time, so we might be seeking some guidance. Um, having said that, we are a family of four. Uh, we moved here from an urban area less than two years ago. We moved here primarily for the schools. And another reason for moving here is providing my seven-year-old and two-year-old some space, outdoor space. And just so that they can experience the suburbs. This is how the book of us grew up when we were kids. The reason why we are applying variance is to be able to put a small deck outside. Uh, we do not have any space to sit outside. It's just, um, grass. When we bought this property, it was in our mind that we, uh, we put some sort of small space outside to sit so that we can enjoy our backyard and, uh, watch our two young kids play. Um, we moved here just before COVID, a few months before COVID. So our kids, primarily for the last two years, mostly have been inside, couldn't play outside. We didn't know anyone. They couldn't make a lot of friends, which is changing now, but still they had been on inside most of the times. Um, no exercise. That was also our concern. So that is our one request. Um, after talking to some of the contractors, we came up with a modest, small deck. We are flexible with the size of the deck. We are. In the anticipation of this deck, we are in the process of getting the fence done between us and the next-door neighbors as well. Also in anticipation, we already planted new evergreens along old Short Hills Road to better screen our property. We are also open to any suggestions regarding landscaping. We are very flexible when it comes to what kind of evergreen trees we need to plant to get better screening. And I believe there's a real hardship here because we don't meet the setback being a corner lot. We do meet the twelve-feet setback on the other side, just not the eighty feet from the old Short Hills Road. We also talked to our neighbors before applying for this variance. They are really nice people and we have a good relationship. We approached to them, talked to them. They were quite happy with it. That's why we went ahead with the variance. I also want to explain why we chose a deck. We did go back and forth, uh, between the deck and a patio. We have like nine or ten steps from our family room all the way to the backyard. So patio just didn't seem very functional considering the number of steps. As I mentioned before, we are open to any suggestions about landscaping size to better screen shield property. We're looking for a small, modest deck. We can sit outside, watch our kids play.
What's the size of the deck exactly?
So it's gonna be along the back, so it's sixteen by twenty-four, but there is a small window well from the basement. So the effective area is gonna be sixteen by.
Thirteen by twenty.
Thirteen by twenty.
So those. Six, that's sixteen.
Say the size again.
So, uh, the width of the property at the back end is twenty-four feet and, um, the deck size is proposed at twenty-four feet by sixteen feet. But because there is a basement window and there is a window well, so it cuts down three feet. So the effective size, if we cut down the stairs and everything, it's twenty feet by thirteen feet. That's, that's mainly the usable area. It's, um, explained at the end of the application, there is like an elevation drawing and the dimensions are there.
So looking at the back of the house, the steps to the deck are on the left-hand side, but close to the house?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
It's right outside. It's right from our kitchen to the backyard. Yes.
And we are flexible with that step. I mean, if that's the question, we, we just thought that because the window well is there, that probably is the right location because, you know, there is already, um, space there and so.
Okay, so the space between, because I'm looking at your, your drawing and I just want to understand, how wide is that gap that you've allowed for, for the window well?
Three feet.
Wow, okay.
How many feet?
Three.
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 I'll just step off the ground.
Sorry.
How high is the deck off the ground?
Just one second. Let me check. It's probably around three and a half, four feet. I'm checking the exact dimensions.
Whatever our floor is, it's exactly at the same.
Around three and a half, four feet.
Yeah, doesn't it? It should, right?
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says three and then more. It's three and a half, four, I think.
Any other questions of this, these witnesses? Are there any other witnesses besides the two of you?
We have our contractor dialed in just in case if you have any technical questions that we are not capable of answering. But he's not here for the testimony, just.
But he's not here.
Alario Gallego, he should be, he has dialed in.
He's here. Do you need to, do you need?
But if 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 he's gonna provide testimony, he would need to be sworn, need to be available on a camera.
Yeah. If if there are any questions, he's available to answer them. That's how we requested him to join.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions for these witnesses? Eileen, nobody?
No, no one.
Anyone in the audience who has any comments that they would like to make before I close the public portion of the meeting? Eileen, nobody there?
No one.
I close the public portion of the meeting. Members? Comments, please?
I would support this application. I don't believe that the deck would infringe on the neighbor's property. It's further off the property line, the actual house is by, looks like about seven and a half feet. So the deck is seventeen feet from the property line as opposed to the house being ten point three feet on the on the near side to the street side, thirty eight feet, but it's probably more like forty by the time it gets to the deck. So at the end of the day, I would, I would support this application. I think it's a modest request and be a nice addition to the house.
Anyone else?
Yes. I completely agree. I think it's very reasonable to have some type of outdoor space that's on, you know, matches with the ground level of the house. So I think it's very appropriate.
I I think considering, considering that this wouldn't even be in front of us were it not for the corner lot issue. Yeah, I think it's a completely reasonable design.
Is there a motion on this case, either to agree or not agree with the applicant?
Motion to approve.
Approval.
Second, the motion. Rick Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Wyatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Is there anyone who has any matter to bring before the board? Which is not on the agenda? I hear none. I see none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or in favor, hands?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
I I want to thank Eileen because she really helped us navigate the application. We were complete novices and didn't know what we were doing. Thank you so much.
Very welcome. It was my pleasure.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.